I had to listen with an ear pod while I was teaching just so I could have this opportunity. These meetings are not held at a time that is convenient or even possible for many people. I strongly oppose the desalination project. This project does not benefit the people of this community or the people that this council claims it represents. It only benefits large corporations who take so much from the city and give back still little. This project will risk the health of our community's most important natural resource, our bay. And this is just for the benefit of the few and the very rich. The city was mistaken to put Exxon and Steel Dynamics and their want of water ahead of the needs of our own residents. You can't photographer, chemist, biologist, and environmental scientist. And I want to know what they're telling you because I can tell you what they're telling me when I ask. They say this is wrong. They say this is a mistake. This is potentially devastating to Corpus Christi Bay. Do you want this to be your legacy? Do you want to be known as the mayor and the city council that killed Corpus Christi Bay? Is that what you want for your legacy? Because I'll make sure that happens. The people who love this bay won't forget what happens here and won't forget who is responsible. Put Corpus above corporations and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Next we have Teresa Carrillo. Ms. Carrillo? I don't know if you're muted. Okay. I'm sorry, we're not able to connect with Ms. Carrillo. Next on the list is Shirin Del Souza.
Wait, did he host? Tell him who he is.
Ms. Del Souza, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you see me? Okay. Shirin Del Souza, 6030 Tapestry. Today, I would like to urge the city to please apply for this grant for a trail from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. I actually did all the work myself. And all we need is a legal document that says Corpus Christi has the right to make a trail in this public area. And I can't do that part. That's on you. And I actually spoke to the grant coordinator, and he gave me all the information I need to complete this grant. Yes, there are some supporting optional documents that you can give, like letters of support, final designs. These help, but they are not required. Or even a resolution from the city council to show support, that's not required. These are optional. I gave all the required information, the maps, and actually didn't come up with a location myself. It's from the NPO plan. There's already a plan for this trail. I used a part of it, and I said, let's use this as the grant. Now, I want to mention that this grant has been around for a while, for many years, and it gets awarded all over Texas. Corpus Christi has never, probably never applied for the grant, never got the grant. Actually, the only time Corpus Christi did get the grant is actually the Botanical Gardens. They applied. So I don't know if that counts, but they applied for a trail in the Botanical Gardens. But Corpus Christi for a public use, never applied. So I know it's competitive, but the chances of winning are 0% if you don't apply. But if you apply, you increase your chances. So maybe that in itself might increase our odds, the fact that Corpus Christi has never won. I've been getting a lot of runarounds behind the scenes, and I'm going to let the public know. For example, they say, well, we don't have enough money because how the grant works is it only pays 80% of the project and the 20% the city has to pay. It's up to $300,000, so the city would have to pay 20%. And I spoke to the grant coordinator, and he said that you can use that money within four years. So you have four years to do it. So you don't have to work on this right away. I'm sure you guys are going to make this trail eventually in this four years, hopefully. I spoke to the grants coordinator, all the information. He saw the document. He said, okay, yeah, you gave all the information, the map, the pictures, all that. And all that's left is a legal document. So please, city manager, pull the strings required to get that document. Please, let's get on that for the benefit of the city. If you want to follow this advocacy that we are doing, follow us on Instagram at IBikeCC or check out our website at IBikeCC.com. Thank you for watching. And for the record, nobody from the city manager or the Parks Person Tyler got back to me. They just ignored me even though I gave all the information to get this grant, thought the public should know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Del Souza. Next on the line is Elida Castillo.
I'm just going to use my one minute.
Oh, ma'am. Okay. I'm sorry, what did you say?
Oh, I'm just going to use my one minute. Not what I'm.
Okay. You're going to speak in person for one minute. Okay. Okay. Do you want to do that now?
Yeah. Thank you.
So, good afternoon, council. My name is Elida Castillo. I'm a citizen of Taft in San Patricio County, where the city has proposed a desal plant and is exploring the Evangeline. I'm an impacted party since I get to experience and witness all the terrible ways our water is being depleted daily. Despite all this, and being a Corpus Christi taxpayer, because we have an office here, FYI, I'm not asking you for breaks, unlike the seamen industries you sell us out to. I'm an outsider. Honor thy father and mother, which the city council does not do. You do not honor God's creation and Mother of Thea. Thou shall not kill. The quality of life of residents who reside near heavy industry can be reduced up to 15 years less than those who live just a few miles away. And desal will kill our bay and every living creature that call it home and the small businesses that are sustained by it. Thou shall not steal. You are stealing water and picking the pockets out of hardworking citizens through increased costs for those who don't pay their fair share. One thing we know that the city can do is rescind the voluntary surcharge that industries pay for every 25 cents for every thousand gallons. I have nine videos of Hillcrest residents who are speaking out against desal. Please protect them. And Bolero Sitgo GCV, rather than advocating for desal, you can put in the best control measures that, you know, won't kill and harm our communities and deplete our water sources. So thank you.
It's one minute. Okay, Mayor, the next people on the list are, they state that they are non-residents. Would you like me to call them, or do you want to? They're here in person, but they're non-residents, except for the last two.
Yes, that's fine. And, yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. So you want me to call them? Okay. Next, we have Mike Culbertson.
Mike Culbertson, President and CEO of Yore, Corpus Christi EDC. I'm at 800 North Shoreline, but I live over in Portland. I'm speaking in favor of the desal plant. Unemployment in August 1992 was 10.9%. Lake levels were 25%. Corpus Christi was continuing its low, slow decline after the 80s. Yet, the city council decided to go forward and secure a new water source, later known as Mary Rhodes. Again, in 2010, unemployment was 8.2%. Not a lot of growth on the horizon, yet they approved a second pipeline. I want you to think about, imagine where we would be without that 40 million gallons a day. We need a drought-resistant water source. This will be a huge step to ensure future citizens, the resources to grow and prosper for all the reasons. You're a regional water supplier. I urge you to be leaders today. I urge you to be visionaries today and move the city and the region forward. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Karen Knoll.
Actually, I'm Karen Cannoli from Sandia, Texas. I'm a resident of Jimwells. I'm a landowner along the Nuasis River in Jimwells County and a fifth-generation Coastal Bend resident. I'm also a board member of the Nuasis River Authority. And I'm here today because we cannot survive without air and water. Water is our most critical resource, and it is essential that we do all we can to ensure we have drinkable water for future generations as well as various industries, agricultural and industrial, inland and coastal. Drought affects us all, and it is imperative that we work together to find a solution. We need a drought-proof water supply. And why should those of us here today that do not live in Corpus Christi have a voice? Because what you here decide affects us all along the Coastal Bend. Desalinization plants have been very successful in the U.S. and around the world. These plants have not destabilized their environment, but enhanced it. I ask you to listen to the experts, study the reports, and move forward with bringing our Coastal Bend region into a self-sustaining, profitable, and enhanced place for all to thrive.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
My name is Michael Paris. I'm Director of Business Development at the San Patricio County Economic Development Corporation. Thank you for being business-friendly, and thank you for being stewards of the public money. Over the past 10 years, $62 billion of investment have taken place in this region. Capital investment that create jobs, that create infrastructure, and that create a tax base for our schools and for our citizens. Of that $62 billion, $37 billion have landed in San Patricio County, and it's affected all of us. We support the water that's necessary for business and industry because, at the end of the day, it supports primary jobs that create a good quality of life for this region. Thank you very much.
Next is Peter Bailey.
Good afternoon, Peter Bailey. I'm with 135 McGowan Circle, Shenandoah, Texas. I'm not a resident. I'm executive, I'm here today to support the Inner Harbor Desal Project. I am an executive vice president with PLW Water. We're a water infrastructure contractor. I'm also the past chair of TexWin, Texas Water Infrastructure Network, a group of water contractors around the state. We support the project. We also support the use of progressive design-build because we think it adequately manages risks. And I'll leave you with this. We do projects all over the state. I applaud your leadership in taking this step. Many major cities are implementing these types of bold decisions to establish water resiliency, and I wish you success with your project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Williams. All right.
Madam Mayor, distinguished members of city council and city staff, my name is Joe D. Sullivan, Jr. I'm a lifelong resident of the Coastal Bend, specifically Beeville and now Sandia. I'm also a business owner that operates in Corpus Christi and 12 counties in the Coastal Bend. As a former council member of the city of Beeville and president of the Beeville Economic Improvement Corporation in the 1990s, yes, 30 years ago, I am familiar with the Coastal Bend's water needs and resources. I represent the city of Beeville in supporting the Inter Basin Pipeline from Lake Texoma to Corpus, which would ultimately take pressure off of the Lake Corpus Christi water supply where Beeville, Mathis, Alice, and other cities still obtain their water. Just as our energy supply has seen an impressive mix of options for our power, as in hundreds and hundreds of giant wind turbines and solar farms to complement our natural gas, coal, and nuclear supply, so must you take action on our area water resources and sources. The time has come for the desal of the endless source of saltwater to contribute to the existing surface water, sub-surface water in Inter Basin transfer sources. I urge you to stand firm in the face of opposition, just as Governor Briscoe stood when he proposed farm-to-market roads and Mary Rhodes did in the opposition of the road top line.
Thank you. Next is, the next two commenters are on WebEx, and they're also non-residents. The first is Lydia Ponse.
Good afternoon, relatives. I'm calling in for Society of Native Nations, and the Texas motto is friendship. So I'm calling from Venice, California, in kinship and friendship. As we know, water is life, and Corpus Christi cannot be both a petrochemical buildout and five desalinations. You have to make a choice, either or, that or tourists. I was last there with 12 people sitting around eating turf and surf. I will not be going back to Corpus Christi, provided that I can't eat the fish. I am actually indigenous from the ocean. I enjoy Corpus Christi as it is. Make your choice wisely, listen to the people, or I can actually advise that the people that are there speaking against it, take their seats. Take their seats from them, unseat the people that are voting yes today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Frankie Orona.
Yeah, hi. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Frankie Orona. I'm also with Society of Native Nations. That is a Texas-based nonprofit organization, working with indigenous people and those disproportionately impacted communities that are typically indigenous, black and brown communities. We also own commercial property in Ingleside, Texas, and I'm here to say that we are completely against the desal, desalination that threatens not only our environment and contributes to biodiversity loss, biodiversity loss, but it also increases human health issues to the degree that it becomes and is a human rights issue. So-called toxic technology around desalination is false. Do the research. It's what you all get paid to do to protect the people you represent. Do not allow Corpus Christi to become another sacrifice zone in Texas to industry and the pollution and harm it causes long term. Desalination is a false solution, and please do not allow industry to continue to commodify water and have the power to decide who gets clean water access and how much it will cost them. Industry perpetuates.
Thank you, Mr. Orona. We appreciate it. Mayor, just as a note, there's two individuals who were signed up during the regular public comment period who were not here when their name was called.
Okay.
Would you, okay, will you allow them? Okay. The first one is Justin McKenzie.
Good afternoon, city council. Justin McKenzie, I am a resident of District 2, 256 Melrose, Area Code 78404. I'm here to speak to you today in favor of the desal plan. I am, I live in Corpus. My family did get brought here by industry. That industry supports myself, my family, hundreds of our colleagues. I'm a dad, a husband, and recently I've started teaching Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu in the mornings. That's afforded me a chance to meet a lot of residents, most of whom grew up and have been here for generations. I do think that it's very important that young people, young families, professionals, students, they have a value proposition in Corpus Christi. You can look at what's happening globally, or even western parts of the United States, as cities are losing water. That is not a headwind that our people want or need. That is just not something that we want to deal with. We do have the know-how in the region to go put in desal properly. I think that there's been tension in the room. I think that tension is important. I'm a resident here, so we have to get it right. But I, I am a resident in favor of desalination because, like many have said, the world is changing, and you want a solution that is drought-proof and growth-proof. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Justin.
And the last person is Frances Maury.
Hello. This is Fran, I'm Frances Maury, and I've been here since I married Michael Westergren in 2015. And I like to think that I don't need to go on vacation because living in Corpus is being on vacation. It's a wonderful place to live in with all the amenities and the lovely things we get to do here. And I want a show of hands, how many of us here have heard about the millions of little baby oysters they're sending us to seed the bay with oysters? Anybody? You've heard about it? No one else? How about back here? There's a few people. It was on the internet, so I can't find it and cite the source. But that is to help keep the bay viable and productive, and if we dump in a bunch of saline, we might kill all those baby oysters. So I'm hoping that we don't proceed today and wait for some technology to come along and help us solve these problems. And I'm sure that, that technology is waiting in the wings. Thank you.
Ms. Maury, can you state your address for the record? I'm sorry.
2033 18th Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the public comment period.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay. Well, it's 1:45, so what we're going to do is break for lunch, and the council will go into executive session on items 14 and 15 per Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087. Then we will return and start up with our individual consideration items 3 through 10. We'll return. Thank you.[1322.75]
And we are, we're going to start with Section K, which is Individual Consideration Items 3 through 10. Item number three is an ordinance authorizing the private placement issuance of its utility system senior lien revenue improvement bonds with the Texas Water Development Board in one or more series for water, wastewater, and stormwater utility improvements in an amount not to exceed $211 million, $50,000.
Testing, testing. There we go. Okay. So, the plan is, is I'm going to mayor and council. Good afternoon. I'm going to give a presentation on the items, on the council agenda items from three, three through nine. And so, I'm going to present on those items. I have some folks who will co-present with me. So, so here, here's the deal. So, our team is bringing to you today a well-thought-out plan that a majority of this council has requested, which allows the city of Corpus Christi and the region it supports to have greater security and resiliency in our water future. We've had numerous public engagement sessions discussing seawater desalination over the last 10 years, from council meetings, to virtual town halls, to many engagements at community civic clubs. And in fact, one of the things I'm going to have is, I'm going to have one of our staff members pass out a list of all of the engagements that we've had with the public.
We have it.
Over the years. Okay. So, council and mayor has, has that list?
Yeah, we pass it out with the presentation.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so the council has this. In addition to your presentation is the list Drew was just referring to.
It's the, yeah, bullet point. Okay, okay. So, I just want to make sure council, council has that list. I think it's, it's a good reminder of all the engagement that we've had over the last 10 years. I think what's, what's, what's interesting is, is on the top of the list is, in 2014, with Representative Todd Hunter was the, was the kickoff. And so, it, there's a lot of information in that packet that is a good reminder to all the, all the work that we've done over the last decade. With that said, today is a result of years of work, encouragement from this council, and past councils. The critical path has always been the permitting process. We expected that to be the case because permits have to be right, and they have to protect the environment. The permitting phase is advancing, and as a result, many actions that we always expected to happen are now falling into place. This council has given us clear directions, which is pursuing a drought-proof and resilient water supply that provides the highest quality drinking water to our customers. Who pays for this new water supply? That's been a question that's been asked a lot today. The answer to that question is everyone. Everyone pays for this water supply, whether you own a business, a house, or a wholesale customer, or a large-volume user. Everyone pays for this new water supply because it's fair, it's right, and everyone is in this together. Next slide. I guess we didn't have the slides up. Okay. That was actually my first slide. So, next slide. Okay. So, the, the purpose of this presentation is to provide context for the council actions that we are asking this council to support today. These items allow the city to take the following steps. Number one, approving the first bullet allows the city to take the $211 million needed to fund the activities associated with advancing the project this year and beyond. The application for this $211 million was applied for in 2020 and approved by prior councils and is referred to as SWIFT II. By utilizing this funding, as opposed to private debt funding, we are saving approximately $36 million over the life of this loan. Our SWIFT application that was approved by the Texas Water Development Board was competitive. In fact, our city's proposed plan competed amongst 80 other projects across the state. The state of Texas believes in this project. Number two, approving the second bullet allows the city to submit an abridged application to the Texas Water Development Board next month for the balance of the projected costs at an ultra-low interest rate, which will save the city $93.1 million over the life of the loan. This is referred to as SWIFT III. Assuming the city is successful and is awarded SWIFT III, the Texas Water Development Board requires that applicants close on a de minimis amount in year one. It is common to close on the fiscal and legal costs in year one that are associated with the bonding transaction, which includes the fees of the applicant's financial advisor and bond counsel. The amount of this would be approximately $10 million. Number three, approving the third bullet allows the city to apply and accept funds from the Bureau of Reclamation, a federal partner that the city has a longstanding relationship with. The Bureau of Reclamation's grant program has up to $180 million of potential funding for sustainable and resilient projects that help communities in arid parts of the United States. Number four, approving the fourth bullet allows the city to advance the construction of the electrical substation with AEP to support not just the plant site, but also improve the electrical reliability and the footprint of the city. We are asking for council's approval now because some of the equipment for a substation can take as long as three years to be delivered. And lastly, number five, approving the fifth bullet allows the city to amend the existing contract with Freesia Nichols, a national and well-respected consulting firm to help us advance the project. Next slide. So, what are the benefits to our customers? This new supply will help the city, and when I say the city, I'm talking about everyone, meet its current and future demands. This new plant will be integrated into the city's water system. This means this new water supply will benefit everyone. Number three, this new supply will utilize existing infrastructure to help distribute this new water to our customers. Number four, this new supply creates a drought-proof water source for our customers. It is a second and much-needed water treatment plant. We currently, as many of us know, have one existing water treatment plant for the entire region. This provides greater security for everyone. Number six, it improves the electrical reliability across the city. And lastly, it creates 3,500 construction-related jobs. Next slide. Most of you know the current team members who have worked behind the scenes for years. I would like to recognize a few of them. We have Esteban Ramos, our Water Resource Manager. We have Maria Corona, our Water Resources Engineer. We have Reba George, our Utility Billing Director. And then, there's countless other city staff that have been working behind the scenes on this project. Additionally, our Freesia Nichols team includes, and you can see one of the members on the screen, Jason Cochrane, who has been involved in this project for the last 10 years. Yeah, we have Jorge Arroyo and Ron Guzman. This team will continue to support us here every day. We also have added some new experts to the team, including Paul Walker, who is a Senior Vice President with Corolo. Paul is currently leading the Houston Water Supply Project, which is a 320 million gallon per day drinking water plant expansion project. It happens to be the largest project in the world, water expansion project. This $1.76 billion project is being delivered through a progressive design build delivery method. Paul is a leading expert in water treatment and collaborative delivery. We're also joined by Dr. Chuck Wolf, who will be leading the entire procurement effort of this project. Chuck is a Vice President with Freesia Nichols. He also serves as a part-time professor at the campus of Texas A&amp;M University in College Station. Dr. Wolf is a former mayor pro temp and a former councilman. One of his greatest achievements was securing funding and helping lead the development of a new water supply in Avondale, Arizona. Chuck not only teaches construction management at the Texas A&amp;M University, but he also has a lot of experience delivering these types of projects all over the country. Next slide. Over the last 40 years, the city of Corpus Christi has diligently pursued surface water supplies. As shown on this slide, we are fortunate to have three: an oasis, La Vaca Navidad, and the Colorado River. Few cities in Texas can say they have as many as three surface water supplies from three different river basins. The challenge that we all know is that these supplies are vulnerable to drought, especially the oasis river, which accounts for about half of our water supply. The other source of water many cities rely on is groundwater, which is a finite quantity and not completely drought-proof. Groundwater in this region tends to be more expensive than seawater desalination when considering the quality of these supplies. There is a reason that groundwater is not a common municipal supply in South Texas, as it is, say, in Houston or Austin, where the groundwater tends to be of better quality. We can, and we are, looking at groundwater. But the fact is, is that we'll likely never own the water rights to these supplies, and therefore, the costs associated with them are generally more expensive than the options we're presenting today. Next slide. At this point, I'm going to turn the next slide to Jason Cochrane with Freesia Nichols, so he can give a quick overview of our achievements to date, especially as it relates to the environmental due diligence that has been, been performed over the last four years.
Thank you, Drew. Good afternoon, mayor, council, city manager. Had the privilege, as Drew mentioned, to be involved in the project for a little over 10 years now, which is an exciting milestone. But what I want to talk about is what, what we've done and then what needs to be done. So, the conversation around seawater desalination for the coastal bend has been going on for more than 40 years at this point. But the more contemporary history really goes back to the early 2000s with a state-sponsored feasibility study for seawater desalination in the coastal bend. Continuing into the next decade, 2011, you saw the Regional Water Planning Group as part of the Texas Water Development Board Water Supply Planning Process establish seawater desalination as a recommended water supply strategy for the coastal bend. That also was the year that started a protracted drought that still to this day is the drought of record, 2011 to 2014. Coming out of that drought was the genesis of your seawater desalination program. Since 2015, Freesia Nichols has had the opportunity to serve as your owner's representative for the project. That means that we're not here to sell a project. We're here to help you understand the merits of a project so that you can make a decision on whether or not to move forward. The stakeholders that all came together at the right time to establish the cornerstones for that project said that it had to be environmentally sustainable. for that project said that it had to be environmentally sustainable. It has to bring supply resiliency and reliability to the coastal bend, and it has to be affordable. One of the things that we looked at was really trying to mitigate that rate shock through funding sources inefficiencies within the project. One of the things that Drew mentioned is that we also have the opportunity to have Dr. Chuck Wolfe on the team. Chuck and I are both board-certified environmental engineers. We've had multiple other board-certified environmental engineers on the job. And so, as professional engineers, but also environmental engineers, we're held to a professional standard of ethics through the state practice of engineering to hold paramount public health and safety and the protection of the environment. So, one of the things that Drew asked me to cover today was a specific focus on how we've evaluated and come to the conclusion that we can meet that cornerstone that I mentioned of environmental sustainability. But I will say, as we came onboard as the owner's representative, we moved into the first of three major phases of work for the project. And during that time, councils were also proactively and significantly moving things forward. You see SWIFT I, SWIFT II, the drought surcharge exemption fee, and the 75% trigger point. Those are all on your timeline. Moving into 2020 is when we submitted four applications to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, two applications on each of your two sites, that's the Inner Harbor and La Quinta. So, Inner Harbor intake and discharge permit applications, and then La Quinta intake and discharge permit applications. Next slide, please. As we moved into the current decade, in 2022, you were awarded your water right authorization for the Inner Harbor Plant, which establishes the ability to divert the amount of water that's required to create up to 30 million gallons a day from that facility. And then, just last month, in December 2023, the TCEQ published a draft for your team and our team to review for the discharge permit for that Inner Harbor Plant. Next slide, please. So, the permitting milestones that we're seeing put us in the place today to be able to really make decisions to move forward. I feel like we waited a long time for these permitting milestones to come together, and we're here. We've also submitted the Corps of Engineers application on the Inner Harbor. So, I mentioned three phases. You've got a summary of the first two phases here, and the third phase you're going to hear a lot about is the procurement phase, which is how you actually implement the project. Phase one looked at the technical and economic feasibility of seawater desalination in the coastal bend. What that phase concluded was that this water source is feasible for the coastal bend. That was focused, like I said, on technical and economic feasibility. But in order to establish those four permit applications to the state and do that in a way that considered every environmental impact and the sustainability of the supply, we knew that we had to do more science and engineering. So, Phase two was focused on siting, which was a two-year effort. During that two years, we were on the water every other week, collecting water samples to make sure that we understood water quality. We've also evaluated 40 years of water quality data from the bay. After that year of water quality sampling, we also looked at what the velocities are in the locations for the proposed discharges. We heard a little bit about that study today. We did six months in each location. And the reason we did that is because even though the state would allow you to model based on an assumption for ambient velocity, we took the step, and your team, credit to your team, wanted to be additionally conservative and make sure that we were not basing modeling on an assumption. The outputs of a model are only as good as your inputs, and if you have assumed inputs, in my perspective, the outputs aren't going to be as reliable. So, what we did was we partnered with the Texas Water Development Board, and they lent us two of these instruments. It's called an acoustic Doppler Current Profiler. Those were installed in both the La Quinta and the Inner Harbor at the discharge locations. And that's the basis for your modeling, that near-field modeling that we've heard about. Now, the survey for ambient velocity comes out with a lot of data, tens of thousands of data points. We took the most conservative approach, which would mean the lowest velocity that we see in that channel for the model, and that was the .0057 meters per second that you heard earlier. Now, flow rate, and forgive me, I'm getting a little bit into the weeds, but flow rate is a function of velocity and cross-section. The cross-sectional area of the Inner Harbor Ship Channel at that location is enormous. So, a very small velocity over an enormous cross-sectional area results in 370 million gallons a day of exchange. And that's based on the most conservative velocity that we could get out of the data. A less conservative velocity that we could have used results in 2 billion gallons a day of exchange at the discharge location. And that's not a snapshot in time. That's six months of data capturing tidal cycles, seasonality, all of that. That's what the model is based out of. So, in the siting, we went from 21 sites to two. That included a full team of coastal ecologists, some of whom have had careers in coastal restoration and coastal ecosystems. In my opinion, we have one of the best coastal environmental science teams in the state. That also included mapping ecosystems and sensitive species, conversations with stakeholders in the region to establish that these two sites are the places that you want to do desal if you do it in the coastal bend. All of that, I apologize for being long-winded, resulted in SWIFT II, which you've seen. We've also done topographic and bathometric surveys in these locations that continue to build this body of work before we move into procurement. And then, the infrastructure integration and the distribution system modeling that actually show where the molecules of water from the desal plant are going to go through the distribution system. So, all of that showed through the permitting, through the environmental due diligence, through the consideration, and I could give a really long conversation about how we established the discharge permit limits, which were proposed to TCEQ. But all of that came together to say, Phase one said that this is a feasible supply. Phase two said this is achievable. This meets all three criteria. If you go somewhere else or do this differently, you, in our opinion, compromise one of those three criteria that I mentioned. So, those are Phase one and two. I appreciate you listening to all that, the engineer droning on and on. I'm going to hand it back to Drew.
Next slide, please. The original Inner Harbor project in 2019 was envisioned to be a 20 million gallon per day plant that could be expanded to 30 MGD as demand increased. CCW has worked closely with the following entities here, which includes the Corpus Christi Economic Development Corporation. We work with the EDC. We work with the Port of Corpus Christi to better understand what kind of demands we should be expecting in the next 10 years. Of course, the Region End Water Group is probably the best one out there. And then, of course, one that is very important is our Pape Dawson Consultant Team, who has drafted and put together in 2023 the Water Master Plan. As you can see from this slide, a projected 2030 demand ranges from 15 to 48 MGD, as shown on this table. A 30 MGD facility will provide us with resiliency, or with the resiliency, we need to clearly meet much, if not all, of the demand. We also know that waiting ultimately increases the overall cost to add an additional 10 MGD. Inflation and continued escalation of market prices, as we know, will continue to rise. Next slide. There we go. The Inner Harbor Facility would serve as a second standalone plant to the existing and only water treatment plant, Owen Stevens. Every other city in Texas, larger than Corpus Christi, has at least two, if not three, water treatment plants. As we all know, given the potential for extreme weather events, rolling blackouts, power outages, supply chain challenges, like the one we had with permanginate and chlorine last year, the need to address deferred maintenance from years of infrastructure neglect, a second plant is critical to improve our water supply, resiliency, and give us the security we need. Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant, as we know, is relatively old. While it performs relatively well, the plant was originally constructed 70 years ago with an additional module that was brought on over 40 years ago. Similarly, the MRP, the Mary Rhodes Pipeline, is about 25 years old. It's important that we should have a second plant to help support these two critical assets so that we can continue to perform the maintenance at the highest levels. Next slide. I was going to say, the treated drinking water from the Inner Harbor Facility will continue to be superior water. Reverse osmosis is the most robust treatment technology in the industry, and as mentioned, the water could be integrated into the city's water system. I will turn this next over to Dr. Chuck Wolfe. Dr. Wolfe will provide an overview of the updated cost model that's shown here and how these costs have changed since 2019. He will also provide some more specific details of the next work elements that will be performed over this year.
Thank you, Drew, Mayor, members of council. So, when we got the draft discharge permit last month, it really sort of triggered the next step in the project's process. And a key element of that is understanding what the cost of the project really needs to be. So, we went back over the past month, and we've updated the cost model from the 2019 estimate to what we would see currently. As you probably all know, over the past five years, in particular post-COVID, we've seen dramatic increases in the construction industry on costs, in particular as it relates to complicated facilities and projects. So, treatment facilities have had significant price increases across the country. So, if we take the 20 MGD expandable facility from 2019 and we move that forward to 2024, you see in the second column how that cost plays out, moves from about $185.2 million to $414.9 million. There were also elements of that original project that were dependent upon CIP projects that were outside of the desalination facility, but were actually required for that water to be integrated into the system. So, one of the recommendations now is to forego on doing those projects, but to go ahead and roll that work into the desalination plant. One of the things that does for you is that it actually increases the cost of the plant for things that you were probably going to spend money to do anyway, but that does increase your access to the grant funding, because the grant funding has a percentage of the construction cost. So, by having this integration into the project of the plant, getting it integrated to the plant, it does meet sort of the complete cycle of having a facility that provides the water that you're asking for in the new water supply. One of the things you'll see in the table here, on the bottom, is the AEP substation. We did pull that number out, because that's a separate action item for you guys today. What we did from that point is we then moved that price forward to the 30 MGD price that is the recommendation for 30 MGD of flow. This is not a full 50% increase in price, because as we mentioned earlier, there were elements of the 20 MGD plant that were always contemplated to be built at the 30 MGD size, but would not have been used at that size. So, obviously, those components do not have to expand. A good example of that, you can see, is with the infrastructure integration construction, that price stays the same, as well as with the AEP substation and transmission allocation. So, when you look at the bottom line, including the grant funding that's being pursued, as well as the drought surcharge exemption for the 30 MGD plant, we're looking at a capital cost of about $552.6 million. So, one of the questions that we sort of assumed that everybody would be interested in is how does this affect the average residential customer? So, the finance department has actually run this through, the rate models, and has a preliminary estimate over the next five years that the average increase on a monthly bill would be about $2.12 to be able to produce this project. Next slide, please. Over the next five years, the average would be $2.12. It does change as monies are expended through the project, sir, yes?
Yeah, Councilman, it starts out less than a dollar, and some of the heavy of that five-year period, spending years, it would go up more than the $2. But on average, when you look over the next five years, it would be that $2.
Twelve cents.
Twelve cents, yeah. Per year, per month, per month. Five-year, we looked at a five-year timeframe.
Is the average per month or per year?
Per month, that's a monthly increase.
Monthly increase.
And we can get into more, we'll get more into it, just Chuck, just doing a high-level overview.
So, obviously, one key element for any of these major projects is being able to stay on schedule. So, if you approve the actions today, a key element of what my team is going to be doing is moving through the procurement process as efficiently as we can to get you the delivery team selected, keeping in mind a very important cost element. The monthly delay for a project of this size has a cost of about $3.15 million. That's only assuming a 5% escalation, which we've seen much higher escalations over the past few years, but we're all hoping will come back down to a more reasonable level in the construction industry. So, a key piece of that is going to be the permitting process, which Jason mentioned has been underway and is continuing. And that process will need to continue through the end of this year and into next year. But the key effort that my team would be leading over the next several months would be going through the process of procuring, under the state code, the delivery team for the project. So, that's a two-step process. We have to do requests for qualifications, followed by a request for proposals. Within this process, we also would recommend, and will need to do piloting, that would be needed to make sure that we can prove to TCEQ that when the water integrates back into the system, it will maintain the stability of the water that's currently in the system. The timing of the piloting so that we don't delay the project and it being able to move forward and incur additional delay costs has been timed so that it ties into when the shortlist of proposers is made. This will allow us to work with the three, but no more than five proposing teams, to make sure that the piloting plan meets what they would want to see. So, whenever they are selected and they move into design, the information they're getting is information that they can use. So, it saves us valuable time on the project by not having to delay that to pass selection. And it allows us also to manage the risk of doing piloting that is not necessary or does not provide what the teams need to design the facility. We are anticipating later this year to early next year to be able to have that team selected and to be able to start with the pre-design and design phase of the project. There is anticipated to be early construction or procurement packages that would happen in the 2025 timeframe. That's why the $211 million tranche is important, because that would allow that money to be able to be spent. This is very important, because we're still seeing very extended lead times on major electrical equipment. Drew mentioned what it could take for a substation, but even the electrical equipment within the plant, I was in a meeting just last Thursday, and it was 116 weeks. So, over two years was quoted for the electrical equipment. So, we want to be able to get that material taken care of early. Typically, these desalination plants run around core processes, around the reverse osmosis. That's something you're better off to purchase to make sure you can design around as well to make sure you have an efficient design and efficient delivery of the project. We would be looking to start the full construction of the project late 2025, early 2026. So, there will be a step in the process, which would be a guaranteed maximum price. There is cost control through these processes all the way through the project, but there has to come a point where everybody says, this is the number that we're going to carry through construction. And in these collaborative approaches, that's typically done at a guaranteed maximum price. From there on, it's mostly heavy lifting on construction. One of the other things that we are looking at is because the city wants to take leadership over operating and maintaining this water source, is being able to provide an extended operations support phase so that your staff that are going to run the facility after the construction's complete are very comfortable with the facility that they're going to receive. Next slide, please.
Mayor, I have a question about the cost.
Okay, we're, are we waiting, or can we?
Yeah, we're going to finish the presentation, and then we'll go to everybody's questions. Thank you.
So, one of the action items that you have for today is the amendment to our current master services agreement to be able to support you through the procurement phase, just the RFQ-RFP work that was on that slide. So, there's some several items that are captured in your council agenda item that are important for this. One is a risk matrix, so that we can make sure we've captured the major project risks, we can communicate that to the industry, and they can build their teams accordingly for how they're going to deliver the project. The state also requires us to put together a design criteria package. That does not require us to put together a draft design of the project, but it does require us to put enough information that the responding teams can know what they're going to be responding to and build their teams accordingly. And then, we would work with your staff on developing an agreement for this project specifically, and then taking them through that request for qualifications and request for proposal process I talked about earlier, ultimately working through the contract negotiation, and then a final recommendation for award to move into the contract for pre-construction phase services. So, that would be the work that we would take on, starting as soon as possible if you approve the agenda item today. I'll turn it back over to Drew. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Next slide. Okay, so, these are, again, a summary of the items that we're asking council to consider. So, the first item is delegating the authorization for the issuance of the utility system revenue bonds, otherwise known as SWIFT II. This is the $211 million that we've secured many, many years ago. The second item dovetails with the first, which allows the city to be reimbursed for the capital expenditures associated with those funds. Next slide. This is essentially how we would spend the dollars associated with the $211 million. So, as Chuck just described, the first line there is procurement. So, that procurement would entail, as Chuck described earlier, the RFQ and the RFP phase, and then the selection of the contractor. We have legal expenses. We have piloting that we propose to do, as Chuck described. The piloting is something that we feel is important. It's something that allows us to potentially improve the design and the construction. It also allows us to have the design builder have ownership in this process, because they would use that pilot to perfect the design and construction of this facility. Then, we would move into the design and pre-construction phase. As mentioned earlier, we would have early work packages. That makes a lot of sense. Early work packages and pre-purchase of equipment allows us to leverage the fact that these costs are going up, they're, these costs escalate. And so, by being able to identify and secure that equipment early, provides tremendous value for our ratepayers. And of course, we'd be looking at expending or spending those dollars at least 85% by 2027. 2027. Next slide. The next item for council to consider is the resolution authorizing execution of the documents necessary to make an abridged application to the Texas Water Development Board for the balance of the project funding. And the next item below basically dovetails that, allowing the city to delegate authorization for the issuance of those bonds necessary. As I described earlier, the bonds that we would be talking about would be the $10 million associated with that tranche, that first tranche of funding. Next slide. As mentioned earlier, this is the other item that we're asking council to consider. This is the ordinance authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to accept, apply and accept for the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation grant funding. And again, this is a really great program. This is a federal program and as I mentioned earlier, we have a great relationship with the Bureau of Reclamation and it truly does help communities that are in arid parts of the world. Next slide. And then this is yet another request to council. This is the agreement with AEP. This allows us to begin the execution of the work necessary to construct the 138 KV substation. Next slide. So that pretty much takes us to conclusion here. I think one of the key takeaways that I think is really important to consider is time, you know, time is, as we can see, time adds cost to any project and we've seen costs have gone up quite tremendously in the last five years. And so with that, I think that's really, at this point, that concludes our conclusion. And so understanding that there's probably going to be a few questions here, we've got Dr. Wolf, Esteban Ramos, Jason Cochrane and myself are happy to take questions.
Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Drew. So Councilwoman Camples?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so grateful that we have citizens that help us to navigate all this because the ordinary person, even myself, that, you know, try to stay on top of all these figures, still, you know, has, I have trouble, you know, absorbing all these numbers. So I wanted to go back to the cost, the estimated cost, let me see, 525 million? Or half a billion? And, okay, so we were provided with a printout from the Coastal Bend Regional Water Plan dated March 2020. I don't know if you are familiar with this. Okay, so their estimate back then was almost the same, 562 million. So now we're in 2024, but yet you say it's less and this is for a 30 MGD. So how can you justify those numbers?
Councilwoman, thanks for that question that's going back a little bit on the history. So let me, let me have Peter Chuck and Esteban take that question.
The region planning group uses a cost model from the Texas Water Development Board. It's called the Unified Cost Model and there's a script of rules and regulations to go under that cost analysis. At that time, the Texas Water Development Board, through that cost model themselves, came up with that number. That cost model has a difficulty understanding how seawater desalination exists. It's more used for groundwater, surface water projects. See, it doesn't do well with the seawater desalination project. But at the end of the day, the region and planning group used, had to use that unified cost model directed by the Texas Water Development Board.
Now, okay, so where, then the difference, how do we know that what you're telling us is correct? I mean, right now, I'm having to trust what you're saying and your history does not, does not speak well for you at this point, Esteban.
So the answer to your question is that the planning group, and it's a planning group, a high-level planning group to understand what projects could be. What we are presenting to you today is a true engineering cost model that Freez and Nichols has spent many, many months reviewing and dealing with that cost model. This cost model is more in-depth than the unified cost model.
But yet we're not really provided with the in-depth background to where you come up with these numbers. Like just today was the first time that I've heard the $2.12 spread out in five years. Have y'all heard that amount? No, just now, today. So this, again, is our numbers that we have been needing for the past, you know, I've only been in office for a year, but I've been paying attention for probably 10 years on this. And every time, you know, it seems like y'all just throw out some kind of number and we still, even me sitting here, I still don't get it. I still don't get the background. I'm sorry, but we don't. And these last numbers that we were just briefed on Friday, that's, you know, we asked, well, what is the cost? And, you know, eight o'clock, Andrew, you're providing that information and then yet even up to our meeting here at 10:19, you're still providing updated information. So for me, that tells me that we are not prepared, that we don't have the facts. So for me, no, no, we, this is too much money and we, I mean, we don't have a good number or you don't have sufficient background to justify these numbers. So that's my statement.
So what I'll, I'll just respond to that. You know, there's a lot of work that goes into this, to this effort and we're happy to provide all the backup information that goes into this. These folks have worked a lot to get these numbers. You know, I think the other thing that's important to note is, you know, cost certainty is something that we all want to have. We don't, we're not always going to have exact, perfect cost certainty. This is an estimate and this is what the latest estimate is. And we know for a fact that in the future, these numbers will change. Right now, these are very good numbers. And, you know, I'm sure Dr. Wolf or some of the folks at Freez and Nichols who have put these numbers together would be happy to sit down and go into the details of how those numbers were derived. But there was a lot of work that was put into that.
Again, I, you know, you all have your engineering degrees, you have your financials, your CPAs, but yet at the last minute, the last hour, you are expecting us to vote on something that is going to affect the rest of, I mean, the 500,000 customers that we keep always, you know, when it, when it benefits us, we mention the 500,000 people. And when it doesn't benefit us, we don't, we don't even give them their three minutes of public comments. So I'm, right now, I'm one of the few voices here to represent those 500,000 customers that will, at the end of the day, be placed with that brunt. And so for me, I think for the rest of the people, and you were, you've been here, you obviously have seen the people that are not supporting this and you may have a list of dates, you know, that you just provided, but these dates, I don't see, you know, evening, you know, where it's convenient for people to participate during evening. Yes, you did hold these talks during COVID on YouTube where you could monitor what people, you know, what questions were being asked. So for me, no, we have not done a good job. And, you know, you may say that if we, again, if we postpone, it's going to cost us more money. For me, it's if we do it now, it's going to cost us even more. So that's all I have to say.
Councilwoman, I'll just tell you, I mean, I am happy to meet, I will talk water anywhere, anytime. And, you know, I, we were at the Council of Coastal Bend Mayor's Conference a couple months ago. It was in the evening. You know, I am happy to spend my evenings talking about water. You know, I think it's an extremely important subject and I know, I can tell you care deeply about it. Everybody here does and everybody has a strong opinion on it. I get that. We have, we have a lot of events and we are happy, we are happy to sit down with anybody who has questions.
You know, that, I'm sorry, and it's not you, Drew, because you just came into the, in this position, but I personally have been told that and that when it comes down to it, it's like, no, you can't invite this person or that person because their opinions, they're, they're too obstinate. They don't, you know what? That's the way life is. You know, sometimes it's, we're not going to be sitting in a room where it's all, you know, nice and roses and all this stuff. But I appreciate that. When I met with you, Jason, or we met and you said you, I'll be happy to, you know, to sit down and talk to anyone that you want. And once I started looking and asking for some of the people that I wanted you to speak to, it was no, no, there's no point. So, you know, it's one thing to say it, but the other is action and the action right now does not prove that you stand behind what you're stating right now, so.
Okay, Councilwoman Klein?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for your work on this, everybody. Thank you for your work on this. I have several questions. So first of all, and I don't want to nitpick, but I do feel the need to kind of correct the record, all right? Drew, I think you're doing great work. But you said earlier that the cost of the DCL is going to be borne by everybody. Currently, right now, as we speak, as I speak, how much does industry pay for water in Corpus Christi? It's $3.94 or $3.96, correct me, it was one of those two figures, just under $4,000 gallons. And residents pay, correct me if I'm wrong, $5.08. So it's not equitable yet right now. And so I want to make sure that we understand that as well going forward, that we still have not achieved equity in our water rates even yet now. We've gotten, done better, I give the staff, city staff credit for that, CC Water as well for correcting that this last few months. We still have not achieved equity yet and so I want to make sure to mention that as How much water does Corpus Christi distribute every day? I know, you've given these numbers before, I just want to make sure that's out there for the public.
Right, so, I mean, as a regional water provider, we're treating water 85 million gallons a day is about the average number that we're pushing out every day from Owen Stevens.
Right. And so 85 million gallons a day, that's what I thought as well. And how many million gallons of water a day does the Exxon-Sabik plant use every day?
So they use about 12, 12 to 13.
So my back-of-the-napkin math, that's about 14% of the water being used by one user. All right, all right, very good. I want to make sure that that's out there as well. And you mentioned as well, I thought you mentioned this, maybe I misunderstood, that there were no communities using groundwater in, I guess, in Texas?
No, so there's not a large use of groundwater in this park for municipal purposes like there is in Houston, certainly San Antonio.
Doesn't Brownsville use groundwater? They have a groundwater desal plant, as I understand it. So does El Paso and so does, Alice is developing one, right?
There are some small communities, there are communities that do use some groundwater. Really, the point I want to make there is that the groundwater that is used in this area, it tends to have to be water that is treated with RO. And so the water that we would be looking at, that we have talked about in the past, Evangeline, and the quantities of water that we're talking about, we would be looking at having to use RO treatment. So we would have a brackish treatment process. So of course, you know, brackish RO treatment processes are relatively expensive. And so when you factor in the fact that you would have to add that treatment to that water source, it ultimately, it becomes more expensive than the proposition that we've put before you today.
So Brownsville, El Paso, Alice, none of them use RO?
They do, they do use some RO technology.
So if that's more expensive than seawater desal, why didn't Brownsville in particular, on the coast, go with a seawater desal plant instead of groundwater desal?
I couldn't necessarily answer that question.
Right, right. So I haven't heard this, somebody brought this up, I guess, in public comment as well. I thought it was a very good point. Do we have a sense of the annual operational and maintenance costs for this facility after it's already built? Not on day one, but let's say day 1,001, how much is it going to cost on a daily basis or monthly, I don't know, monthly or maybe yearly basis? I guess you could maybe break it down that way. Do you have a sense of that at all?
Chuck, did you want to take that? Okay, Jason put the numbers together.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we've got a slide if we could go back to the cost slide. The last section on that cost slide, I believe, shows the operations and maintenance costs. That also includes preventive maintenance costs, which is basically the annualized replacement of all the components.
This would be on top of the 562 million dollars.
That's right, so you have debt service on the capital, which is why we break it up into capital and O and M. Oh, it's actually maybe something that was distributed. I'm going to look to Drew and Peter here. I thought it had made it in, but it hadn't. We have that. Councilman Klein?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, because that is, that is essential. Typically in desal plants, half of your cost of water is debt service and half is operation and maintenance.
Right, right, right. So Jason, while you're here as well, or maybe Mr. Wolf, Dr. Wolf can handle this as well. You mentioned that, so I don't think you mentioned today, you mentioned it last Friday when you did a briefing with us on this, that you had run models now that considered, took into consideration not only the Inner Harbor plant, desal plant, but also the Harbor Island desal plant and then CC polymers desal plant. Is that correct? That's what I heard on Friday, if I'm remembering correctly.
So if I used the word model on Friday, that was a misstatement.
Okay, I may have misunderstood.
We have evaluated the cumulative impacts of those plants on the bay. We did not model CC polymers, but several modelers have. And so we took their model analysis into consideration. We looked at the Inner Harbor seawater desalination plant, the modeling that we'd done, and I'm talking about near field for Inner Harbor. We looked at your proposed La Quinta plant, which is up to 40 MGD, and then Harbor Island as well. And the port, as we heard earlier, did a far-field model on Harbor Island.
Right.
So we took all of that into consideration and when I say we didn't model, we evaluated because there are, you know, there are specific things that are models and there are specific things that are just engineering evaluations. So we did it on a mass basis, understanding how often the bay turns over based on freshwater inflows, based on drought and precipitation cycles, and then looked at the mass, because essentially we're putting back salt that's already there. So we're taking an amount of water out, concentrating the salt, putting that back. So on a mass balanced basis, our assessment is very consistent with the port's far-field modeling. The far-field model is called SUNTANS. It's actually an oil spill response model, but they applied it for the Harbor Island plant for seawater desalination. What it showed was that long-term steady state, you're talking about less than a part per thousand accumulation in the bay system. So that's far-field of the system. The bay naturally varies between about 17 parts per thousand and 40 parts per thousand because as we also heard earlier, it's a relatively shallow bay and estuary system. So because of drought and precipitation cycles, it has these natural variations. Within that range, 17 to 40, which is the natural variation, the impacts that the port's modeling showed was less than a part per thousand. We've showed around six tenths of a part per thousand of that possible increase. So if I used model on Friday, I apologize.
I may have misunderstood.
We did evaluate, yes, sir.
Yeah, all right, thank you for that. So, and just to be clear, I think this was stated as well on Friday, that the evaluation included those three potential desal plants, did not include the two desal plants proposed for the La Quinta Channel, either by the port or by the city of Corpus Christi, correct?
It did include the Corpus Christi, La Quinta Channel.
Oh, it did. So there was four that were taken into consideration.
Yes, now the caveat is, and I think you and I have talked about this, that the CC polymer discharge, as currently configured, is an open discharge. Their permit's up for renewal, you know, we'll see what comes out of that, but all of the modeling done on that discharge shows that it does not assimilate with the bay. So when we looked at accumulation, that is a negligible accumulation because the modeling that's done there, and like I said, we didn't do any of that modeling, but several parties have, and it shows that with an open discharge, it does not assimilate with the bay.
Right, so help me out with this because long before I got on the council, this is back in June of 2020, this is during the pandemic, we were talking virtually, I guess, about this, there was a meeting you had with some environmental groups, I was one in that meeting as well, and I think one of our attendees asked this question pointedly, as of June of 2020, has anybody done a study of the impact, environmental impact of multiple desal plants? And the answer, I don't see him in the room now, Mr. Arroyo, was that no, no one had done that, somebody should really do that. And I posed this question again, I guess it was last fall, and as at that point, the answer was still no. So now you're saying that an evaluation has been done, when was that evaluation done?
We've presented on that for a few years. I don't have a date for you, but our position is that if someone wants to look at all of the potential desalination plants in the region, that should be the state, specifically the Texas Water Development Board. Now, every future permit applicant does have to prove that they are not going to degrade the ecosystem. So that's the anti-degradation review that TCEQ does. You know, take that for what you will, but the TCEQ does take a look at that and every future applicant will have to prove that. So, you know, you could tell me that there's going to be 15 desal plants on the bay and that we should model. bay and that we should model that. I have opinions about how many there probably will be. It's less than 15. And, and I think that it should be modeled, but I think that responsibility probably lands with the Texas Water Development Board.
So, and I'm going to get into this area that I don't really know very much about. I'm going to ask some questions that might be kind of silly. How many times did you run the modeling? Because in other applications, either there's an applicant, this is a number of years ago for another plant, they ran the model 64 times before they got it to fit the numbers that they needed for the TCEQ. Actually, the TCEQ ran the modeling for them to get it to fit under the TCEQ parameters. And I want to make sure that sort of thing's not happening again now.
Yeah, and I can't tell you how glad I am that you asked that question, because this is one of my favorite things to talk about. And Chuck is going to have to yank me off the podium here if, if I get too long-winded. One of my favorite parts of this project is that our team and your team got together and asked the question, how do we make sure this is sustainable? So what other projects have done is take a model, throw data into it, see what the model comes up with, and then recommend those model outputs as TCEQ permit limits. We did not do that. So not only did we get ADCP data and water quality data to establish those permit limits, but what we started with was species salinity tolerances, and not just specific species that are used for biomonitoring. There's two species that are used for biomonitoring. Neither of them are in the ship channel in significant quantities, right? So we looked at local species salinity tolerances across a range of those species' life stages. Coming out of that, we, we wrote, Mike Morrison and I wrote what we call the Critical Dilutions White Paper. It's on DCL.cctexas.com. What that did was establish sustainable dilution criteria based on species salinity tolerances. This is before we ever got to modeling. And so we established those limits based on what's environmentally sustainable. And I'll tell you, I care as much about the redfish in Ithaca as anybody, right? And then we modeled whether or not what we could do technically in the discharge could meet those criteria that were established based on salinity tolerances. So we definitely wanted to make sure the horse was before the cart, that we understood the ecosystem, the macroorganisms in the ecosystem, their tolerances. And this was with our coastal ecologists and marine biologists. All of that is documented in that white paper, like I said. And then we use those criteria in the model. So the question about how many times did we run the model, we were not running model iterations to try and achieve some target, some arbitrary target, if that makes sense.
Right.
What we did was we established criteria, ran the model to see if we could meet those criteria. The model said yes.
And on the first time?
Right. So we were comfortable proposing those to TCEQ. Now, now some of that is the array of diffusers, the angle of trajectory, the port velocity. So, you know, you may, you may play with a six-inch port or an eight-inch port. What gives you the best dilution for the application in the inner harbor? And so I can't tell you that we ran it once. We probably looked at three or four configurations. But our target was a salinity criteria that was based on what we think is a very appropriate standard. And since then, there has been a standardization around our approach. For example, after we did the ADCP monitoring, TCEQ came down and started requiring that for future applications, whereas before it wasn't in there. So I will always commend your team for being very, very diligent in doing the right modeling and science to make sure this is sustainable.
Okay, good. So let me ask you this. This is a kind of out of left field, I guess, but I just had this conversation yesterday, I guess, or the day before yesterday. I had not thought about this before. I hadn't heard about it either. Interesting question. The question of a damaged bond or indemnity bond. Is there such a thing in this project? I mean, has Frees and Nichols, have they signed such a bond saying that if, let's say, $500, $500 or $500 million of damage is done to Corpus Christi Bay because their model didn't turn out, things didn't turn out the way their model predicted, that they're on the hook financially for that price tag?
Councilman, that's something we'll have to look into. I'm not familiar with that.
So the person I was talking to, and again, the person I don't know very well, they said this is kind of standard practice in other areas, not necessarily environmental areas, but in other areas.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds like a legal, it sounds like a legal question. And I, I just, you know, I wish I could answer that question. I just don't have information. But certainly something to, to look into for.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Drew, while you're at the mic as well, you mentioned the AEP substation is going to be a part of all this as well. I thought I had asked this question before. I don't recall. Maybe I've forgotten the answer already. How will this energy be generated? I mean, doesn't that represent a big pull on the grid, the DCL plant? Even if you set up a substation, because that's not going to generate, unless it's going to generate electricity there, energy of some sort there on the spot, otherwise it's going to be pulling from the grid, I take it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have the answer to that question.
No, the answer is yes. It's going to, we, right now, we, the city buys power from a power provider, and we have the option under a 10-year agreement to amend that contract, or we can go out and secure power from another provider, just like any other company, a residential customer, a subdivision.
Okay.
It's routine business.
All right, all right, thank you. So there's three seawater DCL plants in the United States. Maybe there are more that I'm unaware of. Two out in California, San Diego, and I forgot the other community, Santa Clara.
Santa Barbara.
Santa Barbara, thank you. And then Tampa, Florida has one as well. I'm familiar with the two, with the one in San Diego, Carlsbad Plant out there, and then the one in Tampa. Both have caused sharp rises in water rates. In San Diego, water rates tripled once the seawater DCL plant went into operation. And the other issue that I've got as well is, is that they do not provide a continuous water supply. In both California and in Tampa, they found that they have to shut the thing down at least two or three months, I guess, out of the year to either replace or clean the membranes. So it's not a continuous. It is drought-proof in that sense, but not necessarily continuous, because they have to be shut down so often. So I wanted to make sure to mention, that's what, do you, have you contingencies, do you have contingencies for that scenario here in Corpus Christi?
Councilman, I, I think that's a great question. And how I would respond to that is, is I think it's important to have a diverse water supply portfolio. I think if you hang your hat on any one supply of water, I, I think that's a recipe for potentially some vulnerabilities. And I think that, you know, as I presented earlier to you today, you know, the city has done a great job, you know, securing surface water supplies. This is the time. And we're looking, we're looking at other supplies besides seawater desalination. I mean, we're looking, as, as we've talked before, we're, we're in discussions with a groundwater source. But I think to the point, you know, we want to make sure that we have a, a, a number of supplies available to us so that, you know, we're not necessarily, you know, totally dependent on one source of water.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks. One last question as well, for Doc, I guess Dr. Wolf kind of a comment, I guess. And I don't, I really appreciate your, your expertise being brought into this whole process. I have a little bit of a problem with some of your comments today now, saying that this is going to cost you $3 million for every month that we're delayed. I think it was the number you gave us, $3 million extra. I bought used cars before. And when a used car salesman tells me, man or woman, tells me, you got to buy right now, you got to buy right now, or a house, for that matter, somebody else is going to buy this if you don't buy it right now. I don't walk away, I run away. And so, so, so the idea that, that there is, that this is a time sensitive, I understand it's time, and overtime's going to cost more, I understand that as well. But I don't think that should be dictating what we do today, because this is a serious consideration that's going to have long-term ramifications. I think everybody seems to agree with that, positive or negative ramifications for our community, for the coastal bend region. And so we should take, do our due diligence and take our time and consideration in, in making this decision.
So Councilmember, I, having sat on your side of the dais, I fully understand where you're coming from. You guys have to, I'm not going to advise you on policy decisions. The point there is, this is a substantial project, and our team, if you decide to move forward, is going to be moving forward expeditiously to not cause those delays. And that's why we have structured the schedule the way we've structured it. But clearly, that's the decision that the nine of you have to make.
Right. Appreciate it. Thanks so much. I think those are the only questions I've got. If you could get back to me about the damage bond or indemnity bond, I'd like, very interested in that going forward. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. And forgive me, since we're covering all, all, all of these items, I'm going to kind of jump around to each of the individual items as we go through. Just as a total cost, I'm confused, because we've seen different sets of numbers. We have an item here to accept the 211, which is in addition to the 11 million we've already taken. And then there's another item, item number five, that asks for an additional 535, which comes out to a total of $757 million. Then you have this one here on this sheet that says 552 million. So what's the actual number? Is it 700, is it 750 million, or is it 550 million?
Right. So the original SWIFT II loan was for 222 million. And we are asking for the balance of the costs necessary to build the plant based on this latest cost model update that Frees and Nichols has performed.
Okay, so what is that? What is that number?
Right. So that, that number is the 758 million?
Okay, 758 million. Okay, thank you. According to the region N study, that I'll go back to, and I actually pulled up myself just to, to remind myself on it, the, the projections for 30 million gallons a day was, for 30 million gallon a day plant, was $562 million. Cost projection with a debt service of $39 million. So at the 758 million, what is the debt service on that?
Do you have that?
Is it somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 million a year?
Councilman, we have that. And if you want to walk with me through the cost model, we could do that. We've obviously calculated debt service based on that 3.85 interest rate.
Well, in item, in item number five, you don't provide that information as you do in item number three, where you provide a comparison on the SWIFT loan, where the total amount for the payback of a 211 million dollar loan is 143 million for a total of 154 million over the 30 years. So, you know, so almost, what, 70% of that is going to be interest? And so if you're going to do 758 million, you know, we're talking well over a billion dollars that we're going to be having to pay back, that's going to be on the, on the backs of the, of the ratepayers, right? Okay, so what is that, you know, that's a billion dollars over 30-year period. What does our rate model look like for the long term? And I know you did an average over five years, but I'm not interested in averages. Averages hide stuff, right? So we want to know what it is for each year, and what is it going to be at the end of year five, at the end of year 10. Have we engaged our rate modeler with that?
The answer to that question is yes. We have engaged the rate modeler with that information. As was mentioned earlier, and I think the city manager provided that number, it was about $2.12.
No, 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 that's an average.
On average.
That's an average. I want to know what it's going to be each year based on that rate model, because you can have a dollar, you know, 50 cents in year one and $5 in year five, and we're actually going to be paying that $5 in year five, right? So averages hide stuff. I know it hides stuff. I remember the RTA did that to me, and I've figured that out, too. So it, you know, we want to know the exact dollar amounts to know what that does to the rate, because you don't pay an average in year five. You pay the actual rate.
Councilman, we're going to put up the slide that has the, the five-year incremental. It's a slide here, slide 22. So we have at NewGen, who's done our rate modeling this last budget, over the past couple of weeks, has, has generated rates based on data we gave them. And so Drew.
So when are we going to get this? Just now?
Right, that's what the meeting's for, is to go over this. This is an open meeting, so we're going to go over it here.
Okay.
Right, we open, this is part of the process, is we, we're providing information.
So if we don't ask, we don't get?
No. This is part of the process. This is a business meeting. We're sharing information in an open forum, so we don't get accused of working, you know, in the back room somewhere.
Okay, so what you're saying here, in 2028, the rate increase is going to go to, is going to be $5?
That's correct, Councilman.
$5.13. Now, is that the raw water cost or the increase, or is that going to be untreated water?
That, so that, that is what the increase is for a typical household that uses 6,000 gallons?
Okay, so what is it going to be on the, on the raw water, which is what I asked on, on Friday?
I, I don't have that number.
Okay, because. Here, you know, we're, we're at the city, we're making decisions for regional, a regional customer base, right? Where, we, you know, it's all about control. He who controls the water controls the world, sort of thing, right? So we're controlling the water for many other areas in the, you know, in the, in coastal bend region. San Patricio, Robstown, Mathis, Beeville, Jimwells, you name it, we're controlling it. Okay, I think they're in Jimwells. So their cost per contract, where we, where we discuss it with them for raw water, was like a dollar, between a dollar five and a dollar 12, right?
Right.
So if, if you're going to increase the water expense, I mean, and I don't know what this is, because I assume that since this is a new water source, that the most of the increase is going to come from a raw, a raw water perspective. Is that correct?
I think that's correct, Councilman. Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's just take the average here of $2.12 that you kind of put together here. If you put that $2.12 to the raw water, you're tripling the cost for water for, for our, our partners in the government. Have you told them that?
No, we haven't.
Okay, so they are not aware that we could be tripling their costs for raw water?
I wouldn't say we're tripling it, Councilman, because we don't, this is the all-in cost. We don't have the breakout just for the raw water.
Right. And so this is not a cost per thousand? Like you're talking about, this is an impact to a monthly bill for a residential user who uses 6,000 gallons?
Okay, so what we asked for, what I asked for was a cost per thousand gallons, right? What that's going to look like? Because, I mean, we, we get our bills in a thousand-dollar increments, right? I think we even advertise that on our webpage. You go to a webpage, it says you pay $12 for your initial 1,000 gallons, and every gallon, every 1,000 gallons after that, it's 509. And then if you go beyond 4,000, it's like 583. And if you go beyond 12,000, it's like six something, right? Six, I forget the exact amount, which I'm surprised I even remember that much. But you have, we have it by on a per thousand-gallon basis. So what is that, what is that going to do to the raw water? And what is that going to do to the, and if we haven't even talked to them about it, what is that going to do?
So Councilman, I'm going to have, I'm going to have Reba George talk a little bit about that. At the end of the day, I mean, the, everybody who uses water, whether you're in Mathis, you're in Alice, those folks are going to have, they're going to have a rate increase as a result of this new water supply.
Okay, but you're asking us to vote on it for other people that don't have a vote, right? They don't have a vote on whether or not they can, they're approved of this or not.
That's right.
We do.
Right.
We control that water.
The city council's a policy board for the.
Okay, but I don't want to be, you know, you know, Mussolini telling just, they're going to have to accept it. I want to make sure that they're, that they're, they are aware and are partnering up with us. We have not had the, we don't even know what this is. I don't know what our cost, additional cost per thousand gallons are for raw water than treated water, on what this is going to be. I mean, this is just all, to me, right in the sand. We don't have anything in documentation. You're, you're, you give us the information on this, on these numbers a week, less than a week ago. And you expect us to vote on it in less than a week without really digesting all the numbers? I mean, it, I, this is laughable. Peter, I mean, I understand you want to move fast, but damn.
Councilman, the, the full council has directed us to move fast. In fact, one of the last water briefings we did, I think the majority of the council.
Doesn't mean we have to be stupid.
Excuse me. The majority of the council pretty much told SAF, get us some more water. That's what we're doing today.
I'm sorry.
We can get those tapes. The council said, get more water sources.
It's nonsense. You're giving me nonsense.
I'm just telling you why we're doing this.
You're not giving us the, the good information to make an informed decision. We're not telling our partners, and when I call them partners loosely, because we basically tell them what we're going to give them.
One of the biggest ones here in the room, Brian Williams, and he's been with us all just about every meeting. He's the biggest.
I don't even know if he knows these numbers.
He does. He'll come up and tell you.
Okay, well, if he knows them, then that pisses me off, because I don't.
I didn't say he knows these exact numbers.
Somebody who's not even a government official or an elected official for this city know the numbers before I.
He doesn't know the numbers. He knows the concept, is what I was talking about, Councilman.
Councilman, do you have other questions?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Okay, so what are, what are the raw one, raw water cost numbers?
When we ran the model to incorporate the DCL, the 30 million gallon plant, we used the same percentage raw to percentage treated that we had used in this recent year's rate model update. It was about 8% to raw and whatever. It was about eight percent to raw and whatever that hundred percent. Ninety-two percent or ninety-one percent to treated. And that's how the model was run.
So what is that? What is the number? What does it cost?
It's reflected in that slide.
We look at it.
It's reflected in the slide. You could apply those percentages to the the percent increase or the dollar, the amount increase for every, every year. I didn't do that level of calculation.
You're expecting us to do the math here on the dice? I mean.
You ask us to do it on the fly sometimes, so I turn it out spare play.
Well, if you were better prepared, right?
No, I don't have that information.
Okay, well, so. All right, let's go to my next question since you can't answer that one. Bureau of Reclamation, you said on here, you don't say which grants you're talking about. It just says grants. Ordinance specifically says ask for grants from Bureau of Reclamation. Which grants? It says up to a hundred and eighty million. Which grants are you referring to? And let me preface that. I went to the website and looked at what grants they had available. The only one for desalination was for a thirty mil, up to a thirty-million-dollar grant. There was no other grants associated with D-SAL on that website. And it was WaterSmart Grants. So which specific grants are you talking about? Because I'd like to know which ones we are so we can add them to this ordinance.
Right, so Title sixteen, Title sixteen is the grant that allows us to to secure a hundred and eighty, up to a hundred and eighty million dollars or twenty-five percent, which is ever lower.
Does that include the the WaterSmart Grant for the thirty million?
Yeah, well, that's a separate, that's a separate program. Right? They're all, okay.
Okay, I'm going to go look at that as well because it just, I mean, you're not, you you don't give enough information and on any of this stuff. Okay, next question. When, when looking at the region N number, they were actually pretty close regardless of what modeling they were using. They were actually more close to what what they, what the the numbers are now than what you guys were initially. You guys had said somewhere in the neighborhood of between three fifty and three seventy-five, I believe, was the number. You can correct me if I'm wrong on that for when we did. And it was that was the basis for not pursuing any other water options like wastewater reuse, groundwater. As a matter of fact, we ignored Evangeline people for two years before ever engaging with them. So I have to say, I feel that it was a deceptive number in order to not do other projects. So what's, you know, and I'd been asking for an updated model ever for the last two years. And then you drop it to us before, a week before we're supposed to vote on it? So I want to understand, was that number a deceptive number? The three twenty, three fifty to three seventy-five? Because it, right now, I feel I'm, I feel it was deceptive.
So we clearly do not believe that that number was a deceptive number. So the number that was put together back in 2019 was based upon the project components as were envisioned at that point in time based upon our estimate. The the modeling that the regional planning groups use are not based upon any particular trend, treatment plant components or treatment plant requirements. They're based upon dollars per gallon and other types of factors. So the fact that they have a sort of correlation to where the cost estimate is now is more luck than it is anything else. The, what has happened, and we just completed a benchmarking study for another client on another project over the past several months. What has happened post-COVID is almost a doubling of projects in the industry. You can see with E and R data where things have doubled from 2019 to 2024, other data sets. We had, we had one project within that data set that was priced at about eight dollars per gallon in in early 2020, and was well over twenty dollars per gallon in 2023. So this is something that's been happening within the industry. I would say I'd be careful to look at two completely different estimates, estimating approaches, estimated models, and try to discern anything from them. The estimate that we've been doing is based upon the components that are anticipated for the project that's that's to date. And what we did is we took the information for that plant and updated it given the cost data that we've been managing for now. As for the timeline on that, Councilmember Hernandez, the data always moves. So the best data is the most recent data that you have. We get data every quarter that we get refreshed through our data sources. Updating the model before you had a permit, even a draft permit, would be spending the city's money without a great deal of of potential benefit because we didn't have an idea of when that permit would come in. So the timing of it is perhaps a little bit unfortunate in the fact that the draft permit came in in the middle of December. But that is the reason for the timing to do the work now to update that cost model. But it is, our cost model is based on the project and then the cost of components for those kinds of projects today. Not, and that's what it was back in 2019 as well.
Yeah, and Councilman, can I add to that? So the the monthly rate for the customer, the one we told you and showed you here is based on NewGen's rate analysis, which is a much more sophisticated rate modeling. He, the ma- the rate modeler spent all last week and probably a little bit of the week before plugging information into the rate model. And you remember this last summer, the exhaustive amounts of time we went going over that rate model. So the prior numbers we had were done with a less sophisticated and less rigorous model. I don't think we distributed to things like the raw water cost to res- to high-volting users or what have you, the different components of the rate. So NewGen, Andy McCartney, actually put this into the, an actual rate model. And I think we, it was safe to say that wasn't done before. So you're kind of comparing two different, two different modeled numbers. One more sophisticated, the older one less sophisticated in its development.
Okay, so by, I mean, just looking at those numbers, by 2028, we're increasing year over year, getting to five dollars, and I don't know what the total amount is in those five years.
Right.
But.
Yeah, we can put that back up. This is right here. And this is the monthly, if you look at the top, this is the average residential customer.
Okay.
Six thousand gallons of water.
Give me a second, give me a second. Okay, last, last question. You know, I, you know what? It doesn't, it doesn't even matter because honestly, I don't think I have the the information needed to make an informed decision going forward on this. You just, you know, and I, and I'll, I'll be clear. I'd, I'd never been a fan of the inner harbor site because of its cap, right? I've, I I met with Jason Conklin and Jorge Arroyo there with the water team at, they're on Ho- on Holly. And I asked point blank, what's the maximum we could put into this inner harbor? Because obviously, if you, if there wasn't a a concern for for the maximum, you wouldn't, we could make a hundred-million-gallon plant, right? And the the answer you gave me at that time was thirty-two million gallons a day. It was this cap. Okay, well, if you look at kind of the history of what we've been doing and looking for for new water sources with Mary Roads and Mary Roads Two, which is what, about forty million gallons a day? What is it?
Yeah, about that, probably.
Thirty Colorado River, thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. So i- in that timeframe from nineteen ninety-eight to today, what is, you know, in twenty-five years, we've had to go look for water twice with that about, you know, in that amount. So this is, you know, this will probably suffice for another, what, ten, twelve years? And then we'll have to go back and look for some more water. As opposed to having something more scalable. And that's why I always said Harbor Island because it's it's something you can scale up because it's proximity to the Gulf of Mexico. I think we're going to be doing this again, or another council is going to be doing this again in in ten, twelve years because we're going to run out of water again. And we can't increase the size of this facility. And then we'll have to build a second facility with a second power substation, with a second group of employees, with, you know, another building that, you know, just more and more money, money, money. And we should look at the long term, not the short term. So I will be making a motion to table this item.
Okay, anyone else? Well. Since you've, both of you have spoken, but you've not spoken.
I clarify, table the items three to three through seven, I believe it's the amount.
Second, that's seven.
Councilman Presley and then Councilwoman Gumples.
Okay, guys, real quickly, just for clarification. Drew, you said something a while ago about currently we treated water through our current water treatment plans about eighty-five million a day. Okay, of that, the the amount of water that comes from our two lake reservoirs accounts for how much of that eighty-five MGD?
It, it depends on, it depends on how much we're able to pull off Lower Colorado, but generally, it's about half.
About half, okay, fifty percent. So, and then the balance, the the other fifty percent is coming from Mary Roads One and Two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Is this the only enclosed harbor or D-SAL plant you know of in the world? Or somebody said something a while ago about Barcelona has an enclosed harbor.
I'm going to, it's a good question, Councilman. I'm going to let, I'm going to let Dr. Wolf or Jason Conklin.
Mayor, could you please ask the audience to, they all had their opportunity to speak. Could you ask them to please quit interrupting?
Yeah, ladies, if if y'all would please.
There is some decorum here, so.
Follow decorum when, when, okay, I'm asking you to please, let's, let's have a little bit of respect of everyone.
That'd be real nice if you do that.
The same way we do.
Thank you very much for your rudeness. So back to my question.
Yeah, Councilmember, I do believe that this project is first in the configuration that's being considered for this.
Okay.
There are other facilities that are using lagoons and harbors and other things, but the the withdrawal and and return of the brine in generally the same area in this kind of a thing. I'm pretty sure this is first. There are a lot of D-SAL plants around the world, though, so I could be wrong.
Okay. And in the first year of the use of the two hundred and eleven million dollars, Drew, you've said we we have to use a minimum amount of that? Or do we have to use all of it in a certain period of time?
Right, so the the requirement, and we've, we've talked to our bond counsel and our financial advisors. So the the requirement is, is that we spend eighty-five percent of that in in three years.
In three years?
Yes, sir.
Eighty-five percent in three years?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's a, it's a IRS, you know, bond arbitrage type consideration. Our bond council's here with us.
They don't want us drawing it down and earning interest on it.
Right, yes, sir.
Okay. And let's talk about groundwater for just a moment because there's a lot of comparisons about what that cost is compared to D-SAL. From, going from, say, 2019, what what do our cost estimates look like with respect to groundwater of, as as it would compare to for today's?
So we we are in discussions with one of those parties that has groundwater cell in the sand-packed community. The numbers are a little bit more expensive, or they are more expensive than the seawater desalination option. One of the things that's that, and we're discussing this now with them, is there, there is an in-ground price. It's called the raw water fee that they charge for that water in the ground. And and so we're, we're trying to negotiate that with them. But if you, if you look at the costs associated with the well field that they're going to have to develop, we're talking about twenty-one wells in in this area of San Patricia County. So there's, there's the capital cost to drill the wells. There's costs to build the infrastructure. And then with the volume of water that we're talking about in that well field, we're talking about maybe twenty-four million gallons a day. That water has to be conveyed into a pipeline. And so there would be a separate pipeline that would be built and and constructed and and delivered down to probably Owen Stevens, where it would go into Owen Stevens. It would be conveyed with the water there. So we're talking about, and then in addition to that, in addition to that, there would be a, there would be a treatment requirement because this water tends to have elevated TDS, total dissolved solids. So when you look at the costs of developing the well field, the capital costs with that, the capital costs in building a Brackish RO plant to treat that water, twenty-four MGD, and then looking at the cost of a parallel pipeline to get that water down to to us, to our community. And then you're looking at the costs of the raw water, the actual raw water costs. Keeping in mind, in in seawater desalination, we're not paying anything for the cost of that raw water. It's, it's our water. We've got a water right for that. So when you factor those costs in, the costs associated with this groundwater source is more expensive at this point in time.
Okay, if I remember correctly, the information we were given is even if we did like the Evangeline deal, it would be capped at probably around twenty to twenty-five million a day total.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. And and let's say, for instance, we built a thirty MGD a day D-SAL plant on Harbor Island. And ten years from now, we decide we need another thirty. The cost of adding that additional thirty is going to be a similar cost of what it costs to build the first thirty. Is that not correct?
I, you know, I would, I would assume it would be somewhat comparable. But I will say this, Councilmen, one of the challenges, and and we've, we've been looking at this with the port. We've had several, I say several, we've had many meetings with them to talk about how that water could be integrated into our our system. Because one of the things that I think is really important to note is that, you know, we we benefit by having water integrated so that there's, there's reliable, you know, drinking water supply. And so, you know, one of the things that was challenging with that is is trying to figure out how to get that water that is, you know, quite a ways away on a barrier island, integrated into our system. That, that, those costs are going to be relatively expensive to do that. And so one of the attraction, attractive components of this project is that, you know, this, this facility is 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 right here. It's, it's integrated into our system. And so that, that is a, that's a huge cost advantage.
Yeah, so having said that, what, if we built something at Harbor Island, you would then have to project how large your pipeline needed to be on a, for future use. If you built it for thirty MGD a day and you added the thirty down, then you're either going to have to replace that pipe or put in a different one.
Yes, sir.
Or to duplicate the effort, okay. I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Gumples.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on all these conversations and other conversations that that I've been hearing, bottom line is, this will never be enough. One, desalination is not, it's not going to be enough. Two, it's not going to be enough. But yet, the population does not justify it. The people, the population that we have in our area does not justify it. Now, you know, right now, we're about to hit stage two drought. So here we come at at this place in time where industry, because they can, and that we have a binding agreement with them, that they don't have to cut back. And and who decided that? Another city council before, you know, we are sitting here. So, you know, we have these huge decisions that we have to base, that we have to make. And those are legacies that are going to be left for our children, you know, our grandchildren. And I'm, you know, I'm, of course, I'm not going to support this, but I just want the people to realize that, that, you know, this, what is happening to our area, it's, it's really turning into a wasteland, and that's all we're doing. We're, we're not trying to, you know, tell people not to work in industry because, yeah, I've got my children that work in industry. But what we're trying to do is prevent more and more and more industry to come into our region. And I feel that our city is getting pressure from outside, from the state, from, from the world to appeal, to appease all these countries that are, that are want water. And they, they're coming here, and we have a responsibility to our five hundred thousand people that are relying on us. So again, these figures, again, don't. It just seems that you're just coming up with them at the last minute, at the last second. I mean, here we are, you know, figures that weren't even provided in a, in a, in our slide. I mean, what does that take, a few seconds to do? But yet, if we don't ask for that information, we're not given. So, no, I I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Klein. And then we're going to go to public comment.
Thank you, I'll be brief this time. You mentioned thirty-five hundred construction jobs for this this project. So are we talking about thirty-five hundred workers in the Hillcrest neighborhood then? Is that what we're talking about?
Did you wanna take that?
Yeah. So that is an estimate that comes off of published economic data for, you know, cost multiplier factors based upon a million dollars of, of construction cost. So yes, one of the challenges that we run into in any kind of major construction project is during the life of the construction, you have to pay great care for the community that you're working with. Hopefully, we'll have contractors that want to engage as many in the local community as they can to deliver the work. There are certain things that are highly complicated and technical in these projects, but there's also a lot of work that general people can do. And certainly, on other major treatment facilities around the country that have been done in metropolitan areas, that's exactly what happens. But yes, there is the potential that over the life of the project, you'd have thirty-five hundred jobs put to this. The peak construction rate may be something more like six to seven hundred people though.
At a time?
At a time, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. So last comment I would make, just refers back, I guess, actually to the public comments that we've heard today. By my count, unscientific count, twenty-eight people spoke against this project today, and ten spoke in favor of it. Now, we got a bunch of emails as well, all you did as well. I got emails from people who are opposed to desalination from seventeen different people. Megan Alvarado, Merida Ferris, Pat Craig, Mary Alice Inahosa, Linda Spurlock, John Hardy, Cynthia Weber, Natalie Mendoza, Amanda Rios Place, Amber Sam, Dash Harris, Luna de Tere, Love Sanchez, Jordan Millbrook, Janet Newcomb, and Neil McQueen, and RD Raditz. All spoke against this by email. We did get one positive as well. So by my count, again, back of the napkin math, forty-five opposed this project and eleven are in favor of the project. That sounds like the score of a Dallas Cowboys football game. Thank you.
Councilman Roy.
Thanks for your presentation. There's a couple of things I just wanted to share, remind maybe the public or talk a little bit about staff. I know that one of the things that staff is working on, when you take a look at the current Mary Rhodes Pipeline and you look at what the, right now, the maximum capacity that can be put out, I guess, we're looking at shoring that up, improving that pipeline so that we can enhance the amount that flows through there without damaging the pipe. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So we, we have a project that is in motion right now where we are doing a condition assessment on that pipeline. And so the plan, the plan is, is to look at how that pipeline is performing, where the vulnerabilities are, identifying those appropriately, and then structuring a capital improvement project such that we would, we would make those repairs with, with the, with the intention of, you know, essentially pushing that infrastructure a little bit more, getting more water to flow down that pipeline. As, as was mentioned earlier, there's about forty, forty to forty-five MGD that goes down that pipeline. So we run it at what's referred to as a schedule two. We, we would like to see that pipeline provide more capacity.
About what percentage do you think you can get safely with those modifications?
Right, so, so I, I would think that if we can make these modifications, we, we could run that pipeline at a schedule of three, which would be an additional ten MGD. So running it at fifty-five million gallons per day, that, that, to me, would be a success to be able to get an additional ten.
And that, and that project's ongoing right now. You haven't put that on, on hold, you're working on, on, on that project now?
Absolutely, we're still working on that.
The other thing I just, you know, when I sit here and I listen to some of the comments that I, I want to bring up is that, and because somebody made the comment on, on your staff or consultants that, you know, if we delay this, that it's just gonna continue in terms of cost to increase. And Councilmember Klein said, you know, it sounds like a used car salesman. But the reality of it is, in life, and I'm trying to think of a situation where if you take a look at the price of milk, it's went up. You know, when you take a look at the price of an automobile, a, a brand-new automobile, it's not, you know, in terms of what their suggested retail price is. I can remember the first car I bought in the military. I thought I'd never in my lifetime pay more than $10,000 for a car. I said it won't happen, and, and, but I was wrong. So, the unfortunate thing is, is we've got some developers here and some housing, construction guys. I don't see housing going back down in terms of, you know, nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety prices. They continue to go up. And we have to be able to take that in consideration. And this council has to be able to look at what happens when we continue to kick the can down the road. These are hard decisions. So, I appreciate your comments and, you know, I, I wanna thank public comment today. And the other thing is, is that sometimes the Cowboys will surprise you, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Drew, before we go on, because we do have a handful of people who are here for public comment, can you just reiterate, when someone says who's paying for this? And when I say this, I mean the recommendation, which is the thirty million, or thirty MGD. So can you reiterate who's paying for this and why the thirty, right, at this point? Because initially, as was mentioned by Ms. Parkinson, you know, it was ten, right?
Right. So. So, I mean, I think, you know, just to summarize that again for you, Mayor, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we, we depend on bodies like the Region N water planning, right? And we depend on master plans, and these are plans. These aren't necessarily always how it's gonna act, you know, absolutely work out, but these are the best plans that we can use to make informed decisions, the best decisions that we can make. I think what's interesting is, is, you know, the, the Pape Dawson master plan, I think it's, or the Region N plan talks about fifteen MGD of additional demand just for residential. So I, I think that the notion here that this is not for the residents is just a false narrative. This is for the residents. And I think to the point that you made earlier about who's paying for this, you know, this, this is not, tax dollars do not go up. This is based on the ratepayers who pay water bills. So it's not, it's not a tax increase. Certainly, you know, there, there's gonna be a rate increase to cover these costs, but I think we can all agree that for having that drought-proof supply, that security that we're all looking for, I don't wanna diminish it that this is a small price to pay, but at the end of the day, it, it is the cost of what it's gonna take for us to have that reliable back supply of water. So, you know, who pays for this? Everybody that, everybody that lives in the coastal bend pays for this. And, and as I mentioned earlier, it, it's the right thing. We are all in this together. And, and I think that, you know, that's, to me, that's an important point that, that, thank you.
Yep, no, thank you.
Hey, Mayor, if I may have a second to.
Yes, this is Councilman, Councilman Suckley, who is online with us. Go ahead, Councilman.
So, as, as has already been touched on with respect to timeframes and when, when discussions amongst councils started, you know, over ten years ago, and, you know, this inner harbor project, I guess, six plus years ago, started heading down the tracks and, and, you know, it's been touched by several different councils. So, you know, right or wrong, this council now is to the point that it's time to, to commit to move this thing forward in the very, very foreseeable future. So, again, with it starting six years ago, looking at all the different options we have for alternative, non-interruptible water sources here locally, I think there may be some better options, especially with respect to location and as others have addressed scalability. But this is the one that's gotten furthest along the track. We have a urgency with water, we've, we've all touched on that. And again, I, I don't think it's been touched on, maybe it was in the packet, I didn't see it, is, is also our hundred percent all-in on Owen Stevens being our only wastewater treatment plant is having the desal plant will provide us some level of additional redundancy with respect to water for our overall drinking water system. So anyways, like I said, I just wanted to touch in. I agree with a lot of the things that council's already said. Appreciate everyone's comments, both in public comment today and via email that I've received, so.
Thank you, Dan, thank you. Okay, and with that, and of course, I wanna just kinda wrap one other thing around that, that we, that was mentioned. And, and that's, we are working on multiple things. We're working on the Mary Rhodes Pipeline improvements. We're working on Owen Stevens, which, as you showed us, we have one treatment plant. And, and larger cities have three, I think it was the max, which is needed. And based on a plan, we, we don't create those plans here, we're not water experts. That a regional group of people sit around a table and they say, "We are responsible for making certain that they know what," they meaning the region knows what their water needs are. This is the water plan, right?
Yes.
That's the Region N. And then, of course, on top of that, we moved forward to say, "Hey, Pape Dawson, let's create a plan. We need to know what's coming." That's a responsibility of every single council that comes and goes. And I respect, I respect the disrespect, but I also respect your voices, everybody's voices. Some are respectful and some are disrespectful. And, and guess what? You gotta take it, that's okay. You have a voice here. Mr. Weber, you have a voice here. Mr. Loeb, you have a voice here. Rachel, you certainly have a voice here. And, and everyone in this room has a voice here. So we appreciate that. But we also have to sit here and think about what our responsibility is. We're seventy percent, our reservoirs today are seventy percent dry. That's where we are. So with that in mind, and thank you for all the comment to my council members, regardless of the direction in which you'd like to go, we're gonna go ahead and open public comment. Mr. John Weber, you would be first. And I'm going based on the list, you wanna? Okay, that's fine.
I, I just ask, I have to pick up my daughter from school at four forty-five, so. David Loeb, four seven seven one Ocean. I'm here speaking for myself and not for the college. I'm here as someone who sat in your chair at the beginning of this process to encourage you to continue it. At that point, we did not know whether wastewater reuse, desal, or groundwater would be the best project, so we funded studies that looked at all of them. Taking into all the issues, it looks like desal is the best option at this point. Just as those projects were the ones rejected when we built a pipeline, I also wanna encourage you to do your duty and begin the process of looking for what the next deal will be. Lay a good groundwork for the council ten to twenty years from now. Use the lessons learned during this project, put them in a better spot than you are in. The reality is, we need more water for our community. You can tell because there are people telling you to take it from somebody else, but not from themselves. Entering drought stage two will discourage investment in our city if not accompanied by strong council action. Entering drought stage three will cripple our economy, four would destroy it. It also appears that the cost increases confirm the site location as being a good one. The inner harbor was picked as one of two sites out of nearly two dozen because it was less dependent on piping and was an already impaired body of water. So it appears that with the cost of pipes skyrocketing, this is an even better deal than the alternatives that would require tens to dozens of miles of high-capacity pipe and the energy cost and the environmental cost of producing that energy associated with moving the water in addition to building the plant. Am I concerned about rates? Absolutely, as my previous comments to you all have pointed out. But my concerns over rates are rooted in the fact that we need to keep costs down to be able to afford projects like this that are essential. Our city manager, Ron Olson, commented during the last water project that there are cities without police, without fire departments, without drainage, without streets, without libraries, without schools, and without sewers. There are absolutely no cities without water. It's the core service, so your budgets, plans, and CIP should reflect that. If you need to cut things to make room for this, do so. I can tell you, it can be painful doing that from a personal experience. To that end, I wanna thank Mayor Macombe for his work negotiating the industrial surcharge and the council in 2018 that passed it into law that included Mayor Cuarto, Councilman Hunter, Roy, Barrera, and Hernandez, that is being deployed to fund the contract today. I also wanna thank industry for having the foresight to be willing to pay more than their proportional share. That was something we had worked on but had not gotten done. It was and is a huge victory for the everyday ratepayer. As that victory shows, water policy is a baton that gets passed from council to council and from staff to staff. Are the handoffs always perfect? No. Will hindsight reveal decisions that could have been better? Yes. I encourage you to use that knowledge to make the next deal better for future councils and not let it dissuade you from doing what needs to be done today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. John Weber.
I just have a question, and Mayor, according to the agenda, the, these are individual consideration items. And I had signed up to speak for items three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. So am I speaking toward item three right now for my public comment?
You can speak, actually, you can speak on, you know, item three, which is what we're on. We are open to hearing all of the items if you'd like to make all your comments.
Do you want me to make them all at the same time? Because there'll be more than three minutes. So I prepared these to be under three minutes for each of these seven items that I signed up to comment for. Would you like me to just do three and come back for four when that is up for individual consideration? Because they're all very separate and very different and very detailed.
Right. You know what, I think that might be best if we separate them out.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor. Excuse me, Miles wants to read the rules there of the.
Each, each speaker is limited to a total of no more than three minutes per speaker.
Per speaker or per item?
Rules say per speaker on the agenda, so I don't, Miles is the attorney, I'd have to interpret that.
Well, I don't know if I can, I'll start out then and we'll, we'll see if I can, like, take bits and pieces of everything and then I will submit these as a written comment for the next meeting. John Weber, six zero nine Naples Street. I oppose the city's plan to issue 211 million in utility system junior lien revenue improvement bonds, and then I'll skip all that other stuff. One of the reason because desalination is not a cost-effective water supply compared to other options. Let's use California Desal Plant for an example. The plant took nearly fourteen years to permit, design, and build. The total project cost was expected to reach near $1 billion. Initial cost estimates were $250 million, similar to this. The cost of construction was funded by bond sales in late 2012. Finch Ratings gave the bonds the lowest investment bond rating. In January 2019, a study was published which noted the discharge from the plant has increased the salinity of water offshore, and this isn't in a bay system. The outflow of the plant is put into the discharge from the Encina Power Plant for dilution. The final salt concentration is about twenty percent higher than seawater. Most desalination plants discharge water with about fifty percent extra salt. I'm not sure about this one, we don't have the numbers, which can lead to dead spots in the ocean because of the super saline brine doesn't mix well with the seawater. The cost of water from the plant will be $100 to $200 more per acre feet than recycled water, $1,000 to $1,100 more than reservoir water. It has also not interrupted water supply. The cause by a plant had to shut down because of red tides. We get red tides here. How many oil and chemical spills happen in the inner harbor? Every time there is one, the desal plant will have to shut down. This is a poor location. City has too much debt already, we fiscal conservatives need to keep a close eye on our ballooning debt. These bonds will have to be paid back regardless of what happens and, and the ratepayers and taxpayers will be on the hook for the total amount. Also, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I, I agree with Councilman Hernandez that this should be tabled till we get more information. I also think it should be tabled until the Title VI complaint has been resolved because that $180 million of grant money will go away if the city loses that Title VI complaint. So, so I'll just wrap up with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Susie Saldaña?
Yes, Connor. Susie Luna Saldaña, forty-seven ten Hackel. Let me explain something to you, especially to some of you councilmen that are saying you've hurt so many people that they're against desalination. This, this audience was composed of maybe 200 people. How many people live in Corpus Christi? What is the population here? About 350,000 just in the metropolitan area. So you've gotta remember that you have a lot of people to represent. And we cannot be without water. We need water. And if it takes desalination to do it. And if it takes desalinization to do it, you've already tried the other methods. If you have some groundwater to get, why haven't you gotten it already? The bottom line is, we need a water source. We need to have water in order to survive. You guys seem to forget that we actually live in a desert and that it's hard to have water in where we're at. And the people are not going to be happy if they turn on their tap water and there's no water there. I'm talking as a layperson, not as this engineers or all the people that come and bring you figures. I'm talking about what the people need, and the people need water. So if you need to take it from the desalinization or you need to take it from groundwater, I don't like the location, I love Hillcrest. I lived at Palm Drive for seven years. However, you have to make a choice. You have to make a choice of what's best for all of the people in Corpus Christi. We need water. There's no getting around it. We need water. We need water to live or we're going to die as a city. And all of the good intentions, I want to see our tourist system up, I want to see our bays beautiful and sailboat ships out there, but you know what? I like to live better. I want my children to have a life. I want them to have water to survive or we cannot survive. We cannot survive without water, so it is your decision to make. And when people say you're going to be held accountable, every single vote that comes your way is going to be accountable. So make sure that your decision is based on the people and what they need, not what a few come up here and yell about. I yell all the time, trust me. But it's what you need and what we need as a city, what we need as the people, and there's no getting around it. Think about this, we need water. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saldaña. Lamont Taylor? Lamont Taylor?
Lamont Taylor, 522 Hancock. I am speaking opposed to the desalinization plant in Hillcrest. You guys are in a hopson's box because, yes, we need water, but the way it's being presented to you is that we have the water that we need. However, we're trying to get more water for industry. So the question is whether or not you're ready to sell out citizens for water or utilize the water and get more water for the citizens versus the industry. I have been asking for this particular plan since this was determined by me as the Hillcrest Desalinization Plant. And inside, you call it the inner harbor, but fortunately for me, and thank God for your, your industry, excuse me, your consultant, Freeze and Nichols, they provided a, a plan that I've been asking for that's went into the core engineer's plan. And the way you have this, you guys look at your plan, storage units is going to be in the backyard or in the front yard of people who live in Hillcrest. You're gonna have tanks. Oh, yeah, you guys said you're going to get an AEP plant. You got to have the AEP plant in the, what we call the buffer zone. And back in the day, it was the buffer zone was for a buffer so that nothing could be built there, but everybody had to have a, go through city council, the planning commission in order to build there. You guys doing a buffer zone and you had no public hearing for this proposed AEP plant in Hillcrest, all right? So I've been asking for this plant, being an urban planner myself, by profession, I'm looking at plans. I know that this needs to be done, but you guys break all the rules and then want us, the people, to bear with it. And I don't think that this fair for the citizens of Hillcrest or for the citizens of Corpus Christi. So I would ask you guys to, we've been asking for you guys to meet with us on time immemorial. Now, I have a plan. Now I know why you don't want to meet with us because I know what's going to go in my neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Isabel Odeisum? Isabel? She's not here.
She's quiet.
Is she quiet, Lila? Bob Paulson? Bob Paulson? Okay, and then, is Brian Williams here? Okay, you'll be next, and then we'll close public comment.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Bob Paulson. I reside at 15226 Barataria Drive in Corpus Christi, and I am the Director of the Coastal Bend Industry Association. I'm here today in favor of moving forward on the inner harbor desal project, and I encourage you and hope that you'll vote that way. I'm not going to dwell too long on, you know, who I am, what the association is. Just needless to say, it is industry, it's in both counties, and the membership is the majority of your large-volume users. Other people before me have covered the importance of water to the economy and to the future of our region. My point today is to really just say, look, we've been working on this for 10 years. The primary focus of the project, going back to 2013, when I had the privilege of being involved in the very setup of this, was to bring a drought-proof component to our water supply system. In the aftermath of 2011 and 2013, it had become clear that we were highly vulnerable, and that was the focus. And the team assembled at that time, and as it's moved forward through successive councils, has looked at reuse, groundwater, desal, in places all over the coastal bend, in various quantities, qualities, locations, and time and again, and I'll read through these here. The first recommendation was made in 2017 in the basement training room of City Hall. In 2019, there was a RFI. There was an update to that in 2020. In 2022, we began another round of examinations of desal plants, groundwater solutions, and they continue to this very day. One plant, two plant, what capacity, should it be out of Barney Davis, should it be Evangeline, Burleson County Water, Demet County Water, water from some other place, Harbor Island. Through all of that, this project, the inner harbor facility, for all the reasons that were pointed out by the team today, especially Jason, my hat's off to you, you did a great job explaining exactly the, the high level of care that Freeze and the city have put toward this project. You did a great job laying it out. This is not an either-or proposition. This is not about the economy or the environment. Every concern that's been raised today and in the past has been considered by multiple teams and councils and is, I think, addressed in this plan, and it's really time at this point to move forward with this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Brian Williams.
Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity to come to you this afternoon. I'm going to go quick because I think I have one minute. My name is Brian Williams. I'm a resident of San Patricio County, and I'm the General Manager of San Patricio Municipal Water District. Today, I would like to speak in favor of item three, which is just the first of multiple items on the agenda that we would like to see approved. We've been working with the city for the past 10 years on the two desalination projects sponsored by the city. Back in 2021, the district passed a resolution in support of the city's efforts to secure viable alternative water resources for the region. Seawater desalination continues to be the best long-term solution for the drought-proof water supply for the coastal bend. I believe that it makes sense to continue the process that has been modified as appropriate along the way to develop the resource. The region has expended time, effort, and money to secure a water rights permit and is close to the finish line to secure a discharge and a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit for the inner harbor site. So I believe it's the proper moment in time to push forward, secure permits, deliver loans.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close public comment, and I am going to entertain a motion to approve item number.
Mayor, I'd like to revise my motion.
What motion?
I made a motion to table.
And I had seconded. Oh, I didn't realize you made it.
But I'd like to revise that because tabling is not the appropriate thing. It's to postpone for 30 days. And, well, let me ask the question here. Is this a single reading vote for all these items?
No.
No, they're all, well, some of them are, some of them are, the ones that say ordinance are two readings. So the resolutions, number four and five.
Okay, so that being the case, I'd ask, I'd ask that we postpone this for at least 30 days in order to get all the information. Obviously, we weren't providing all the information on what it does to our debt, our debt service rate, our rates, to the extent of what it is for raw water versus treated water, what it is for residents versus just the, in general, for what, you know, just, it was, there was not enough information to make a good decision. So I ask that I, to restate my motion from tabling to postponing for 30 days to get this information.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and we have a second.
The ordinance three is to post.
I said for items three through nine.
Okay, so three through nine. Okay, I seconded my second. Okay, so we're going to do a roll call vote on the motion to postpone for 30 days. Councilmembers.
May I ask a question real quick before we vote?
Yes, sir.
So Drew, refresh my memory, what, or council's memory, is what's the terms by which we have to act on the SWIFT funding?
Yes, Councilman. So we received, we received a letter from the Texas Water Development Board. We always knew that February was the month that we would have to respond to the Texas Water Development Board, letting them know that we were going to take the SWIFT loan or not. And so we received a letter stating to us that February 7th was the deadline to let them know as to whether or not we would take the loan or not. So, you know, if we tabled this for 30 days, you know, essentially, you know, the loan is not, it's not going to be available. I mean, that's essentially the.
And, and the cost involved in tabling it per week?
Correct.
Is what?
So 30, $38 million is, is the, the cost associated with tabling this for the next year, which amounts to about $750,000 a week. And then the, the other fact of the matter is, is that, you know, we, we may, we may not be successful in securing a loan again. We would have to reapply next year. It's a competitive process. The Texas Water Development Board has set, they've set these fundings aside for the last four years, so there would be a question, I'm assuming, at the Texas Water Development Board level as to how committed is the city to, to their, to their, their funding opportunities?
Okay. Councilman? Yeah? Good? Councilman Suckley?
Yes, one, one other question related to that, though. So if we, is there a possibility, I know, I think the majority of council, if not all the council, has asked a lot of questions in the last five days and had a lot of them answered. And I understand there's still questions out there. I have some. Councilman Hernandez has articulated, he has a number, is, can we, can we postpone till next, next council meeting and get those other questions answered? And would that allow us enough time, with needing to be a two-reading ordinance, to still meet the deadline that Drew's referring to?
Not, not, not to my knowledge. It's, it's a two-read, two-read ordinance, so if we delay this, we wouldn't be able to.
Rebecca, is it a two-reading ordinance or not?
I'm looking at this document. It appears it is, correct.
All of these ordinances are two-reading.
One through nine are all two-reading.
So it is a two-reading ordinance?
Yes.
So we have a week. So, so today, I mean, I'm sorry, yes, so Councilman Suckley, today, we vote on it, and next week, we have to vote on it again. So in essence, we, we have another week without postponing because it's coming back. All right.
Mayor, one question. On this February 7th deadline, there was nowhere in the agenda memo that that was ever
Nowhere in the agenda memo, Councilman?
There was nowhere in the agenda memo for item number three that that was ever stated that we have until February 7th.
Right.
So we, that is the first, I've heard that information of, of a limitation on when we can take this loan. I mean, I, this is another surprise.
Well, I can tell you this. It's, it's information that's out on the Texas Water Development website. It is in February, that is when they request a notification as to whether or not you take or do not take the loan. We just received a letter, it was told to me that we just received a letter telling us that February 7th was the date that they requested us to provide a response to them.
Okay. Councilman Barada.
Dan, thank you for bringing that up. You know, I'd been, a lot of, a lot of the questions that I think the public asked. First off, I, Drew, I want to commend you and your team for all the hard work that you put in and the scrutiny and the implication that there's less than honorable work going on here. I know, you know, we, we come to you with a problem and you got to figure out a way to solve it. And, you know, the other thing that, is that, you know, it frustrates me because, you know, sometimes there's a saying, you know, I, I, I don't want you to, I don't want you to build, I don't want you to show me how to build a clock, I just want you to tell me what time it is. And, and I think the situation is that, you know, we can, we can manipulate the information to death to go, to, to further the narrative that we're not moving, you know, or we're expediting this too quickly. I, I remember having a conversation with you and your team that, that there was a February deadline. I remember when we requested, I don't think how long ago it was that we were informed that we had to request an extension because of the fact that we were indecisive, or the council had not decided. I shouldn't use that term because I'm trying to shy away from the public shaming and the insulting and the, and I'm really trying hard not to be sarcastic. So, which is difficult for me, okay? So there you go, I'm being sarcastic. So I, I know we've gone over numerous rate models. I remember my, my good old friend, Councilman Garza, who's now, you know, what is it, trustee, you know, he, he actually was frustrated because I, I remember us talking about a rate model when we were talking about the trigger point back in 2019. And, you know, he said, "Councilman Barada, call me a liar." And, and I told him, I, I wouldn't have done that. You know, I think there's a thing, you know, the implication, I mean, I've been called an idiot. I know that there's been many times that we've gone over all these numbers because I can remember that every time that I've been called an idiot, I've been called a crook, I've been called an industry shill, shrill, what's the term? You know? Yeah, shill? I've been called one that, you know, that doesn't care about the community. You know, I've been told by someone here that I forgot where I came from and I don't represent the working man. And a lot of it was because of comments that I made for us moving forward. So with all those times, I know we've gone over, and, and the numbers unfortunately are a moving target. Now, my biggest frustration and my biggest, I was obviously very critical over the port of Corpus Christi. And Michael, please, oh, Michael left, so he can't count my 10 minutes. I was very critical of the port of Corpus Christi because I said this 100,000, or this 100 million gallon a day, and, and at that time, I didn't expect it to be a pun, but I said it was a pipe dream. Because right now, we're using 80 to 90 gallons, 90 million gallons a day. What is it, of which 50, depending on what time and who you ask. I remember in Estevan, what was it? We once said that 70% was going to industry, and now that number is closer to 50, once we figured it out. So, and then, what is it? We've got some other, other projects in the pipeline, not just related to industry. Not just related to industry, and this isn't, and I guess this is a good example of me to segue into this. In District Three, in the West Oso, in the West Oso area, School District, currently developers are looking at building about 1,800 homes. 1,800 homes. Now, the good thing is, is that that's going to provide much-needed ad valorem for West Oso ISD. It's great because they need it. That education needs it. They're, they're, those teachers and that school district is busting their butt out there. But you know what? They're going to need water. They're going to need water. And you know what? We're representing those 1,800 homeowners that still have yet to buy the house and still know what their water bill is. So we don't know what that factor is because we're still going to spread it out. It's a moving target. It's a moving target. I mean, I, I know, and I've been a big stickler for a rate model. And once again, that was my big critique of the port. We need 100 million gallons. So, well, we don't have any customers. Well, we gotta plan for the future. We gotta plan for development. Well, you know, we, we evaluated 21 sites to come up with these two locations because we said it was the most economical. It's the most economical. So regardless of whether the price is an average of $2 a gallon or $5 a gallon, or $5 or whatever it's gonna raise to each homeowner resident, there, there is a cost associated no matter what. Whether it be for the Evangeline, whether it be for Barney Davis, whether it be for Ingleside on the Bay, whether it be for Harbor Island, there's a cost associated with providing water. There's a cost associated with providing in California. So, but, there is also a cost associated from indecision and negligence and inability to be able to make that decision, whether it be political or whether it be to be worried about what, what the public thinks about you. As I've said many times, ad nauseam, if you win by more than 55%, then you have, then you've won by a landslide. And I can tell you from the times that, particularly now that I'm, I'm on a, a new campaign trail, one of the biggest issues is the need for water. I could tell you that in Robstown, there's, there's a project that they're so excited about, a hydrogen company. And at some time or another, they're expand, they, they believe their expansion is gonna be to eight million gallons a day. And the people in the western side of the county are so excited about that. And that's our responsibility to figure it. Now, they're making an arrangement with the Nueces County Water District, which has their own water rights. And the, those individuals in Bishop, they're so excited about the Tesla plant because they need the jobs, they need the ad valorem. So, but the thing is, is the pricing is always gonna be a moving target. And, and I wanna commend, Jason, you know, all the modeling that has been gum in place to ensure that we're at this overly conservative estimate. So I, I think the idea of tabling, once again, we've tabled this for probably four years. Four years. And the numbers are not gonna change, they're just gonna get more and more expensive. We still need the water and we're, what, at, this morning at 30.6?
That's correct, councilman. Yes, sir.
Thirty point six. So next week, if it, if, once it stops raining, we're gonna go into stage two. And I, you know, David Loeb, obviously, and I've been to different sides here this last six months, but he said that going into stage two could have, it hurts the economy and it hurts the residents. It hurts the residential rate payer going into stage three. And I'll finish one more time with this and get off my box, because I just wanted to make these comments about us waiting and not having this information. The information changes daily. But today, I had the pleasure of speaking, that's one reason I didn't go to the tourist meeting, at the Harold Branch Academy, which obviously is, is students that are looking for technical jobs. And we, we, we started talking about water. And, you know, you had those individuals that wanna be welders, that wanna be, you know, either in program technology, whether they wanna write code. They're looking for the type of jobs that this, this, this also would expand. And they wanna stay here in Corpus Christi. That's one of the things, I told them, I'm meeting, I'm meeting people from all over the, all over the country now. All over the country. I said, "Hey, so where, where are you from?" "I'm from Mississippi." "Where are you from?" "I'm from Oklahoma." "Oh, that's too bad." You know, what is it? "I'm from," I joke around with them like that. "I'm from Louisiana." And they said, "Well, why can't we hire more people here?" I said, "Well, it's gonna take you getting educated to do so." And it's gonna take us, and the reason they're coming is because there's more jobs here. And I told them also about the, the expansion of the West Oso School District. And, you know, from that standpoint, there were a couple of kids from there, because they come from all over the city. They were so excited. Now, they're all seniors and I made the importance of them, there was 18 of them and I told them that I, I lost in a runoff by one time, 19 votes. So they know all, you know, the importance of it. So obviously, I'm supporting this, I've been supporting this, I spoke on it on Sunday with the Coastal Bend, the Coastal Bend Environmental Democrats at a forum. And I made, I was not shy about saying, "Would I support this?" I said with regard, and I said it over and over again, and Sylvia and Jim were there, and not over and over again, but I said it again, as I had repeated before, "It's the most environmentally conscious and the, and it's also the most cost competitive, the, the most cost efficient." So with that, I just wanted to assure my colleagues that those questions about, the, the idea that we're not getting the information that we need. The problem is it changes, and if I tell you, "Well, I, I want you to break this up even further, or I want this information, or I want that information," it's never gonna stop. We can ask, I don't know how many questions. So, and once again, Drew, thank you for you and your team and, and what is it, and, and thank you for affording me the time to speak. Mayor.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Hunter has a quick comment.
Thank you, mayor. And just so you know, Mr. Barrera, I was counting the timer the moment I started to walk in there to refill the coffee. But unfortunately, Rebecca favors the Roland rules of order. Right? I'm just kidding. Y'all both do a great job. I just wanted to add to this. I have been pro D-SAL in a lot of different locations since the beginning. This isn't my favorite, but I'm gonna be pro D-SAL. Most importantly, y'all need to get your timeline right, because this has been going on since before I was born. And other than that, thank you for getting us to this point. I never, I always thought y'all were just shelving it in one of the back, you know, spider, spider silk closets. So, but I, I do appreciate y'all getting it this far. Thank you for your hard work. It is kind of concerning that after, you know, 20 years of studies, that we don't have a thousand gallons per day cost that you could give us. But I do understand that that number could range quite a bit. But please have that ready at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. So we have a motion and a second to, Councilman Hernandez, table?
Postpone.
To postpone for 30 days.
Thirty days.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Rebecca, would you please take the role, the vote?
Okay, Councilmember Barrera?
No.
No?
Right?
Yes, okay, so you're against postponing?
Yes.
Campos?
Yay.
Okay. Hernandez?
Aye.
Hunter?
No.
Klein?
Yes.
Pusley?
Did you say me?
Yes, sir.
No.
No.
Roy?
No. No.
Suckley?
No.
Merrill Harado?
No.
The motion fails.
Okay, I'll entertain a mo, a motion to approve the item as is.
So item three?
I'm sorry, item number three is-
Can I ask a question of Miles, real quick, before we do? Miles, since these are all ordinances and we have talked them to death, could we take items three through eight, all one motion, or nine, I guess?
Yeah, three through nine, do one motion. Yeah.
There may be some people here-
Then I so move. I so move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Are, are you good with that, Miles, or?
Point of order, is it possible that there are members of the public who are here to speak on items four, five, six, seven, eight, or nine? I think that's what the point Miles is trying to make.
Exactly.
Go ahead. Council, I mean, Miles, what's your point?
Is right?
Yeah, I think you, yeah, I think you need to ask if the, the audience, if there's anybody here that's here to speak on the other, the other ordinances or resolutions that may have not have already spoken for some reason.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So on items three through nine?
Yeah, anybody here to speak on items three through nine is a question.
Okay, right? Okay.
Is there anyone here who would like to make public comment on item number four, five, six, seven, eight, or nine? Well, that hasn't already spoken. Yep.
Thank you.
Come on down.
That's D-SAL, right?
Yes.
Hi, Jessica Rodriguez, 404 North Chaparral, number 220, Corpus Christi, Texas. Um, where's the timer?
It's right here.
Oh, okay. Just let me know when to start.
It's started.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, um, you know, like, Mr., Councilman Barrera said, you know, this has been going on for a very long time. You know, I, I just moved back a couple of years ago and I was gone for very, very many years. I called my mom one day and she tells me, "We're having to boil water." And I'm like, "What? Boil water for what? This is ridic," you know, like, "What? This, you're boiling water? You can't take a shower? You've gotta, you can't, like, what's going on? I mean, this is, you know, you don't, y'all are all very, very, very intelligent people, right? Y'all are here for a reason. You know, let's get this going. You know, like, Councilman Hunter said before, you know, he was born. You know, what, 34, I mean, even if it's four years. I mean, come on, guys. Do y'all, you know, we know who the water, the water boil. So we wanna be, we wanna be known as the council that gets this going. You know, we don't want to regress to go back to the 1800s and, you know, water, be boiling water. I mean, you know, let's do it for your kids, do it for yourself, do it for your grandkids. And, I mean, let's, let's just, let's go, let's, let's go. You know, look at the economic impact. When my sisters were saying, "Yeah, the restaurants are closed. We can't go to Starbucks." There's no, why? There's no water. So, you know, it's just, that's a big deal. And I just really hope that you consider moving forward with this. And thank you for the last minute comment because I was not ready at all. And I wasn't even planning on coming over here, but I was watching y'all all day and said, "This is too good not to be there in person." So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? And that's on items four, five, six, seven, eight, and/or nine. Okay, there being no one else, we'll close public comment. Councilman Pusley? You made the motion? And we have a second. Councilman Roy seconded. Ms. Wartan, please.
Okay, so for passage of items three through nine, Councilmember Barrera?
Aye.
Campos?
No.
Hernandez?
I will be abstaining. I cannot vote on stuff that I have incomplete information on.
Okay, abstain on all items. Hunter?
Aye.
Klein?
No.
Pusley?
Aye.
Roy?
Aye.
Suckley?
Aye.
Warado?
Aye.
Okay, the items pass.
Thank you, Ms. Wartan. And that takes us to item number 10, and that is a resolution determining the cost of improvements to be financed within improvement area number one of the YCAP Public Improvement District Number One and approving a preliminary service and assessment plan, or PSAP, including a proposed improvement area number one assessment role.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Heather Holbert, Assistant City Manager. We can pull the presentation up, please?
Mayor? Mayor, can I move for approval? No, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
But there is an amendment.
Just one quick second. Heather, is there anything important that, because we did a vote last week and Heather didn't get a chance to say something? Is there anything critical that the council needs to be aware of?
So I just wanna, one, there's a couple of things. One, I just wanted to say that this is the, just the continuation of the process. We will be bringing this, the preliminary service and assessment plan for the YCAP PID. We'll be bringing forward on February the 13th, the final preliminary assessment plan along with the levying of the assessments for the lots that are related to improvement area number one. There is a, we do have to do one amendment within the resolution that is attached. It has the date and the place for the public hearing incorrect. We had been shuffling some of the documents around and did not update this document. And so the public hearing does need to be for February the 13th, not January the 23rd, which would be today. And it needs to reflect that the public hearing will be held at the RTA Building, not at City Hall. We just didn't get that updated before it got put in there, my apologies.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so we do need a, those are, those corrections that Ms. Holbert brought up were are in sections eight and nine of the ordinance, and we've passed out that section for you so you can see the amendment. So we just need a motion to amend as stated by Ms. Holbert, sections eight and nine.
Motion to amend to-
Okay, I move to amend as stated per Heather Holbert.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we need to see Mr.-
Councilman Suckley, yeah. Show yourself.
Okay.
Okay, any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And then we need to pass it as amended, mayor? The resolution as amended?
Motion to pass as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Mayor, I had just a quick question.
Oh, yes, sir.
I asked Heather, I see this question before as well. I'm gonna fixate on this, it's probably just semantics.
Sure.
But again, this is a resolution determining the cost of improvements to be financed. And in the resolution language, there's no cost. I had a, kind of a sticking point on that. There is a mention of it in the, one of the exhibits, I think Exhibit B had a cost figure in it, but not in the resolution itself that the council will be signing.
Yeah, because it's, it is, because it is included in the exhibit, not necessarily, which is an exhibit to the, it's in the, the preliminary service and assessment plan is where all those costs are limit, are listed. So it's not, you don't normally include that in the resolution itself.
Mm-hmm. Even though it's a resolution to determine the cost?
Yes, and the costs then are laid out in the preliminary service and assessment plan.
Is it the 31.9 million? That's in Exhibit B?
Well, there's, there's a, there's several different, so the total cost of the improvements within the PSAP is 45.1 million.
Okay.
And then there is the 32 that will be subject to the reimbursement. The other costs are being borne by the developer, so.
Okay, but they're in the material in the attached exhibits?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And so when the resolution, assuming that it's passed and filed, the exhibit, exhibits A and B will be filed along with the resolution as well, as a part of that same document?
That is part of it, yes.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. Councilman, you good? All in favor, say aye.
I was gonna, I was gonna make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. I wanted to say that, you know, this, this is great stuff. I appreciate how this has all worked out. And I will remind people that it was my efforts to create a PIT policy.
It was.
It was my efforts to create a PIT policy. I envisioned it for, in the ETJ, since we can't annex anymore, but this is a, a good thing and a way to find funding from development that doesn't come out of the city. So it's a, it's a good thing.
Yeah, thank you, councilman. We're gonna be coming back for some slight amendments to it, as well as a tourist policy to piggyback on it. So, thank you.
I don't know about the tourist thing, but, uh, definitely the Pid is good.
We don't have any policy there, so we need one for the, yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
And Pesley's answer.
Um, and we have, uh, let's see. Okay, consent agenda item number eleven is approval of the November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three joint workshop minutes, December sixth, twenty-twenty-three joint workshop minutes, and January ninth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
So, move.
Move, second. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Uh, section K, public hearings, items number twelve and fourteen, I mean, twelve and thirteen. Item number twelve is an ordinance adopting land use assumptions and capital improvement plans relating to the possible future adoption of water, wastewater, stormwater, and roadway impact fees for the City of Corpus Christi in its extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Here, Mayor, Mayor, can I ask? Um, obviously, we, uh, several of us attended a presentation, and we've had several of them. And I know Councilman Hernandez had a ton of questions, so can we just defer to him to start off with?
Sure.
Because he knows what's questions he wants to ask.
Yeah, yeah, Councilman Hernandez?
He brought his resume along with him. So, I, 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 I don't, you know, once again, I'm just trying to save some, some time, Al, you know, so we can, uh, what is it? Legislate, not pontificate, as I do.
I was like, man, that's pot calling the kettle black there.
Before he starts, though, I'd like to, this has been a long effort, and I'd like to acknowledge so many of the people that have participated in that long.
Hey, we've already seen them, that's enough. It's okay, we love them, they're all great, they're all great. Pape Dawson, we love them, they're from San Antonio like you. They're wonderful people.
Just bear with me for a second.
No, no.
Thank you to everybody.
Well, I've got representatives from CCW.
Yeah.
From, uh, Public Works. I've got some CAC members here, of course, of course, in Pape Dawson and Development Services. So, with all of that said, you're right, we can go right to the questions if you don't want.
I mean, if somebody else wants a presentation, I'm open to it.
Councilman Hernandez, go ahead. No, really.
Okay, so, I, I don't have any issues with the master plans. I think they're fine, you know, and they, they can get modified as necessary through the, the normal process of, uh, through Planning Commission. I guess we're gonna have it, we're gonna add a extra step with the CAC going forward.
Yes.
Which is fine. Uh, I did have a problem with the capital improvement projects. And, so, Al, can you remind me how much we have paid for these cap, the, these master plans and capital improvement projects?
The overall contract is a little over three point nine million dollars.
Three point nine million dollars, thank you. There was a lack of consistency on the capital improvement plans, and I, you know, I could be, you know, get into the weeds on the specifics in terms of what the assumptions were for contingency expenditures for all the master plans. The difference in the standard, um, of what the master plans look like. And I could probably imagine you had different people at Pape Dawson in different groups creating each individual master, master plan with associated capital improvement projects, but there was not a standard format. And even some of the projects, specifically on the roadways, where some of, some of them didn't quite make sense. You have a widening of your town, but no, no work done to simmer on. Or, you know, based on the, on traffic counts and the condition of, or not the condition of, but the width of the road. You know, adding medians to streets that don't really need them. Uh, so, I, you know, that alone, I, I could see complaints from businesses already for adding medians to streets. I won't, I won't get into that. But, uh, I'd like to see some consistency, uh, on those products, considering paying three point nine million dollars for this. Uh, so, I'd ask that we approve the master plans and, uh, ask for the capital improvement projects to be standardized into a format with a consistent, uh, set of, of, I guess, contingencies for all the plans that is, that is, you know, consistent over the next five years. Uh, you know, some are twenty percent, some are thirty percent. Uh, you know, I'm just asking that we, we clean the, the capital improvement projects up because these are what's gonna be the basis of the impact fees.
Yes.
And I want to make sure that I can look at, at developers and, you know, people that are gonna have to pay these impact fees with a straight face and saying it was the, 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 the cost assumptions are accurate. You know, because this is what it's based on. I understand it, it's a placeholder, but it's gotta be rooted in reality. So, thank you.
I'm glad you, you said, use my word, which is placeholder. Um, you said a lot, and I want to be able to respond to, to some of the basic, uh, things that you've said. And the first is, uh, you mentioned about the inconsistency, and I'm gonna start with contingency. And I said in one of our meetings, I can't remember when I said it, I said, but, um, our CIPs, and I'm, I'm talking, the CIPs with the master plans, are really high-level estimates, right? Estimates are really determined, and you know, it's kind of an international, uh, style, whether you get an engineering firm on the left coast or the right coast, they, they do it similarly, the same way. But it's basically, it's rooted in project definition. The more defined a project is, the lower the contingency and the better the number is. The less defined a project is, the harder contingency, because there are so many unknowns, okay? Right now, in our current CIP, that, in the fiscal year that we end, you have projects on both ends of that spectrum, right? You also have projects on multiple formats, right? I have no problem with doing a consistent format, and you're right, perhaps everything should have come out looking like it was done by one guy, one individual, right? But whether I, whether you say, hey, I wanna, I wanna pull the, um, CIPs out and have it standardized, um, the projects will not change and the cost will not change, right? So, that can be done after you approve the master plans and the CIPs, but I'm, I'm just, I just wanted to get that out there. It, uh, yes, um, uh, you could say, hey, the, the, the stormwater and roadways are so different than the water and wastewater, of course, right? It's in different formats, but the numbers are the same, the CIP will be the same because the project definition is the same. It's, it's very high-level estimate. In addition to that, and I, I think you know this too, because you probably dive in more than others, a lot of our CIP is really pulled from what we, what the operating department already has predicted and already has established over the next three to ten, five, seven years. So, it's not, um, it's not wholly different from what, what council has already approved, and I just wanted to, 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 to share that with you because.
Okay, Al, let me stop you there.
Sure.
Okay. Honestly, I liked some of the master plans that came out and some of the projects that came out. The, whoever did the, the stormwa, I mean, the wastewater one, did a very good job. Uh, you know, the, they're very specific on, you know, there was like a hundred and forty-three individual projects. It's actually better than our own CIP budget for wastewater. Uh, because, you know, they talks about the individual lift station, what the capacity is, what the flow is, what the, the, uh, wastewater treatment plant, plant that it services. It actually has some really good information. I'm not, I'm not knocking the work, it just, but you have a thirty percent contingency on it, on something that's very specific, and then you have a twenty percent contingency on the roadway ones. And then, the, the sheets on the roadway ones have some, you know, some quirks about it. Like, I'll give you an example. There, all the projects are numbered and lettered, okay? So, you come to a, a page and you say, okay, uh, Project Six W between Flato Road and Cliff Mouse. What is Project Six W?
It's, uh, there's a, there's, there's a.
There's a, there's a chart that you have to go to to find out what Six W is, instead of actually writing down the name of the road on the actual, uh, capital improvement project, and then adding Six W in parentheses.
Understood.
It would be as simple enough to, so I'm here having to go back and forth on this, and I'm like, how usable is this? Okay, so, I'm just asking for this to be cleaned up.
Understood.
Send it back, get it cleaned up, have a standard format, have a standard, uh, uh, process for, for what that contingency should be. That way, I can tell Moses, I could tell Bart, I could tell whoever that's developing something that, yeah, this is a good, these are good projects, these are good pricing, this is a good assumption for the next ten years, uh, and it's consistent throughout the system. And then we could probably pull some of these projects. Like, some of the projects you have in the, in the wastewater one, I think we can put in our, in our budget CIP, and it'd be better than just having this one, uh, specific plan for all the, all the lift stations, because then we don't actually see it. Actually, like I said, I think they did some good work, I just think it just needs some cleaning up and standardization. So, that's what I want to, to get to. You know, I don't know if the numbers will change. I don't know, you know, maybe they will if you have, you know, if you split the difference and say it's twenty-five percent contingency instead of thirty and twenty. I, I don't know what that looks like, but, uh, I, I'd prefer to have some sense of really what these projects are. And, I would ask that you take out all the medians from the, uh, the roadway projects. Now, that, that, that's just my, my two cents on that one, but.
Understood.
Uh, so I would make a motion, uh, to accept the master plans and ask for the CIP plans to be brought back to us at a later date of your choosing.
I just want to make council aware, uh, thank you for, for your comments, uh, Councilman Hernandez. I want to make you all aware of, of one thing. Uh, if you approve the master plans without the CIP, and of course, as the coun, as the councilman said, hey, we'll come back and get to that at some later date.
Dan.
We are currently working on impact fees, right? The whole, uh, from twenty nineteen to now was really to come up with an alternative to trust funds, right? And that alternative is impact fees. The impact fee discussion stops while we, while we have to deal with this, right? Because council hasn't approved this, which is the CIPs, right? So, I, I just want you to know, there's a, there's a cause and effect, right? There's always a cause and effect.
Wait, Al, why would it have to stop? If you have an assumed number that, you know, I'm asking for a cleanup and maybe, maybe an adjustment to the number.
Correct.
You shouldn't have to stop your, your work with CAC to go down that process, uh, and still bring this information to us, because you actually have a basis to look at, right?
Right, but you, but based on your logic, you're, you're saying, hey, maybe the numbers will change. So, the numbers that are here before you now are not council-adopted numbers. So, the work we could do could, could, I don't want to say be a waste of time, but it's not, it's just not consistent with three ninety-five, right?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, I read three ninety-five, and it says you have to have capital improvement projects in order to assess an impact fee because it has to be based on what that cost is, right? It doesn't say you can't work on it. And then, because we haven't even, we're not approving impact fees today.
Of course, you're right, but, but you're approving capital improvement projects, and that's, that's what we're working on, which we're basing our, our impact fee study off of today.
So, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't have to stop work on the impact fees just because it's not approved by council yet. You still have the work that was already previously done. If it changes, you know, minor changes here and there, I don't think you're gonna have, uh, how would that prevent you from actually doing the work for impact fees?
Because the, because the CIPs are not approved, right? You, we're bringing the CIPs today here along with the master plans for approval.
Right.
Three ninety-five always says and. It talks about CIPs, it talks about the master plans coupled together. Can you separate them? Of course.
Wait, the three ninety-five, I'm sorry, but he's incorrect, I've gotta correct something here. The master pla, it doesn't, the three ninety-five doesn't say master plans, it says land use plans.
It says capital improvement plans, right?
Well, capital improvement plans and land use plans. It never says anything about, about our master plans.
However, right, as you know, those capital improvement plans are based on master plans. And right now, we are, uh, in February, we'll be, we'll be reviewing our last, uh, of the impact fee studies, uh, before we, before we convene to make recommendations for council. But we're always doing that under the guise that the mash, that the CIP projects we put forward would be approved on this day and next Tuesday. If you push that out, right, um, there is the possibility that the work we, we are doing and have done could change. And I said to you, even if we organize the CIPs in, in some order, it may even look like, look like our CIP projects, the project definition won't change, which technically means the fees won't change. So, my comment to you and all of you would be, what have we gained by moving the master, the, the, the capital improvement projects out to, to create this consistency, which we can do after they are approved? Am I, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't understand how that changes your, how that stops your work on, on impact fees. Okay, you know, I understand you want something approved and then you go forward, but the number's still there. And as far as whether it changes slightly, or you, you adjust a project here and there, uh, and, you know, and I even asked the departments, uh, specifically, did they go through and review these particular projects? And I guess the, the response I got, well, I, I turned through the pages, is the response I got. Okay, so, um, I'm not gonna point any fingers or say any names, all right? But, uh, I, I want to say, I'm, I'm not sure how, I just want to make sure we're as accurate as possible. You know, I, I, as, with regards to these, and I understand it's a placeholder, but I want to make sure it's accurate as possible. And I don't think it stops your work on, on impact fees. So, I, I made the, the amendment, the motion, um, to amend the, um.
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
Mm-hmm. Can you restate it one more time, please?
Yeah, I, I think it is important to point out that the impact fee statute is one of our most prescriptive statutes. It's very linear in state law. Uh, three ninety-five point oh one four says, "The political subdivision shall use qualified professionals to prepare the capital improvements plan and to calculate the impact fee. The capital improvements plan must contain specific enumeration of the following items." And it lists the items, and it gets down to A seven, and it says, "A plan for awarding a credit for a portion of the ad valorem tax, and in the alternative, a credit equal to fifty percent." So, it's, it is, and then it has a maximum fee per service unit that's in three ninety-five point oh five, oh one five. So, there's not, so, once you make some adjustments, it will necessarily adjust the timeframe. So, Al is giving you the correct advice. He's not telling you not to do it.
Are you talking about the timeframe?
Understand, there's gonna be a, a, an impact because it's very linear. There's not.
Okay, you're talking about the timeframe in which you have to have public hearings, right? And when they're scheduled. Because that's very prescriptive in three ninety-five. I read the ord, I read the legislation, and it says you have to have certain things at a certain point in time. If you're just going by your own timeline of when you have public hearings and when you have that, that's not a concern to me. You just push that hearing back, okay, if you need to. Or you have the approved, or bring back the capital improvement plans before you have that hearing, right? That's, I mean, we're talking about our own timeline.
And that's fine, and Al is just telling you the effect of the council's, uh, potential action here, so.
Okay, is there like a, like a, a super need and hurry to get impact fees at a certain specific date?
There's not, I think, as Al stated, that.
Right. Let's not, let's not rush through this. Let's, you know, we just had a, a, a knockdown dragout in this last, for, for, for DSAL. So, let's, let's do this right. Let's, let's do this right.
Hi, I'm Kara Tackett with Pape Dawson Engineers. Councilman, I could think a couple of things to add to Al's. So, in terms of the differences and contingencies, Al explained that, you know, the level and amount of contingency is based on the amount of information we have in a project. We also traditionally see higher contingencies in subsurface projects, water and sewer, for example, because there's more unknown than you do in a surface like a roadway, um, that are some of those differences. In regards to the formats, uh, we could have made each of these look exactly the same. In hindsight, we probably, city staff and Pape Dawson all wish we had. However, what we were trying to do, because these plans will ultimately be administered by two different departments, was follow really more closely the standards and formats that Public Works uses in stormwater and roadway CIPs and CCW uses in water and sewer. Um, I'm not sure if staff said they have or haven't reviewed each one. We've been work, we met monthly for, we've been working at this for two and a half years now, um, almost three years, and work closely with the committee, most importantly, and I, I mean, credit to those. Some are in the industry, and a lot of them are just people who willingly raise their hand and said, I'll serve on it. And they've spent a lot of time with the projects, with the costs, with the questions. And so, nope, there isn't a deadline, there's a very prescriptive processes. Um, Buck and Miles have said on timing that we need to follow. Uh, you know, we're looking to the committee who's really been heavily involved with us and working through this process, and then the regular coordination meetings with the city on those. To the process and how we calculate an impact fee. We have begun doing those calculations, and we have presented on roadway, stormwater, and wastewater last time. Water is remaining. Those calculations are based on the calculations of the projects in the CIP. So, the work is, Al's trying to say is, if we're going to come back and revisit the CIP and the cost, one, we're gonna need to stop those calculations on impact fee, work and look, and then bring that back to the committee as an advisory board, the CAC, because they have approved and have reviewed and looked at that. So, the question is, is that, do we believe that there's gaps enough collectively there, um, to, to step back and revisit that? Or do we feel that the work of the committee and the consultants and the staff to date have really looked closely enough at these? That they are a con, concept. They're not engineered plans, they're not super detailed. Um, they're a spot in time when they were selected and when they were priced. And so, I think that's Al really, kind of, those, those revisions that would need to happen, kind of a stepping back in the process.
And I, one other thing, and I wanted to make a point, and I think she made it. We've, CAC has been involved in this for about two years and ten months, right? And we still have five meetings left in, in this calendar year. And why am I saying that? Uh, it's, it's not rushed, it is planned, but what, what is unprecedented now is, is the, the growing negative balance in the mechanism that we use now, right? And by the middle of February, that balance will be somewhere around twenty-five million dollars negative. And we don't have a solution for that, right? What that means is that smaller, uh, developers who would, you, ordinarily use a trust fund to run services from point A to point B can't carry, you know, a million-dollar ticket for, I don't know, seven or eight years until funding can reoccur. So, we have to have a, a Plan B, and, and whether it's impact fees or whatever we do, we, we have to be looking to the future because we, we're, we're running upon a deficit that I'm not sure we can really manage. And, and, and we're not gonna stop because we can't put a moratorium on it, because in essence, that would basically stop development.
Mayor, call the question.
That is how we extend infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Okay.
Okay, so we have a.
It's a motion to amend.
Motion to amend. We have a second?
Yes, but can you restate, restate the amendment, please?
Who is the second?
It was Dan.
It was Dan.
Dan, did you second that?
I did.
Okay.
Can we restate the amendment?
Just making sure. You stand by the second, Dan?
Yes, I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Well, with, you know, supporting what Councilman Hernandez said, that last briefing we had, we brought the issue up with the inconsistencies with respect to the contingencies. We asked about, you know, whether there was any sort of inflation in the numbers, whether there was time value of money, whether that was some of the basis of the contingencies being different in the different models. And so it's great we got some additional clarification on the contingencies today, but I don't know why that didn't come back to us in a proactive approach to tell us, yes, this is what we're doing to address this. At the very least, the plan, if the contingencies are different, is to at least footnote them and note the basis for them being different. It's not like we're talking immaterial dollars here. We're talking tens of millions of dollars here. So, and I also support the comment about having the different areas being consistent, so it's more user-friendly.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Rebecca, would you like to go and take the?
Actually, can you restate the amendment, please?
The amendment is to accept the master plans, but reject the capital improvement plans and have them, I guess, polish those up or standardize them and bring this back at a later date of their choosing.
And bring back at a later date.
Right. I don't want to put a timeframe on it unless you want, unless you got a specific timeframe that you can bring it back in.
Okay.
Thirty days.
I want to make sure, I want to make sure, excuse me, that the approval or table, whatever it is, it addresses land use, capital improvement plans, and of course, the master plans. I didn't hear all of that, but I'm sure it does.
Okay, the land use plans, and I want to be very specific.
The land use assumptions, right?
The land use assumptions, if you need that in there, that's, I'm assuming that's a variation of our area development plans. I can include that as approving the land use assumptions.
Right, that's in 395, land use assumptions, capital improvement plans.
I'm not there with the motion.
Okay, we, what is?
So just so I understand what he's asking for, because we didn't talk about land assumptions. We talked about master plans and capital improvement projects, right?
If you look, I pass this out, if you look at the first, what I passed out, so you read that ordinance, that's really what you're. Sorry. If you look at what I passed out, that kind of summarizes it and what you're doing tonight or what we're hoping you do tonight.
So he's amending that.
Okay, so we're adopting land use assumptions and adopting the related master, water master plan, wastewater master plan, stormwater master plan, and roadway master plan. But we are not, we are asking to postpone the capital improvement plans, or in this case, you mentioned projects, to come back after standardizing and adjusting those projects. For how long? Do you want me to put a specific date on that for the?
I believe we need to be back within less than 30 days, covered under the current public.
Well, you have enough time to get to SEAC and have them, you know, after you go through.
We have a scheduled meeting that was to talk about impact fees. We have two remaining meetings. One thing I want to kind of clarify in this, many, many, many of these CIP projects are the exact same costs and format included in the city's current CIP program. So we can look at revising these to have consistent across the four master plans, but now we will have projects no longer consistent with the city's current CIP. So I just want to be clear that one where or the other will kind of have that difference. Does that make sense?
You know, there are a lot of projects, and I hate to belabor this, because you're bringing up more questions here, because I'd rather just kind of vote on this. But there are projects that you have in these plant, in these, your CIPs, that are a lot more specific than our CIPs, right?
Correct.
For wastewater, storm, but for water, it's pretty consistent. And you actually just pulled our pages out.
Correct.
Okay, if you want to use our format, that's fine, or however you want to do that. I don't, it doesn't matter to me, because these are going to be separate from our capital improvement plan budget. Okay, so two separate documents, unless I'm thinking, unless it's going to be the same document. It's two separate documents, so they shouldn't, it shouldn't matter, as long as you're consistent here and consistent here.
The goal in working through this project, as we worked with the departments, was to provide as much consistency in both format and cost between their current plans that they're administering and that have been adopted and approved by the city with what was included in this plan. Is that the right decision? It was a decision to provide consistency for the public in seeing those projects, the departments in seeing those projects, and in messaging that. There are absolutely projects that are new or that have advanced since the city CIP was, you know, prepared and adopted, but where those weren't, we tried to have that consistency across them. So that's just kind of a clarification.
Okay, Councilman Barera.
I'm sorry, I'm going to try and be brief, but I'm, I mean, it's a placeholder. It's just a placeholder. It's like a budget. It's amended. It's just, I know the costs are going to be associated later, and I obviously have not heard a lot of positive things about impact fees, which I'm sure you've heard. So I think it's very important for us to designate, I mean, you know, four years ago, there was an argument about whether to put the desalination facility into the capital improvement plan. And I said that we want to be able to do that so the way that the public has a level of consistency of what our, the vision of the council was at that time. And I seem to believe that the development community, developers want to know what the situation is as far as with the CIP, with the master plan. They need the master plans to be able to decide where it is that the city can move forward. Hence, I go back to one of the particular developments that I was talking about earlier is not included in the master plan. So then they decide, okay, to finance that infrastructure, we'll probably need a TERs or a PID. So I just, I don't understand the consternation of separating it out, because I think what it is, is that all of a sudden, we're not being, and I hate saying this, because I don't want to set Gil off, but transparent, so that way everybody doesn't know exactly what it is that we're doing. That's the whole thing. It's just a placeholder. Now, do I agree with what the cost is and what the, what that may be that's going to change? And then we may not even address it. I mean, we could have voted down $220 million of the CIP today, because we weren't going to approve financing of the desalination facility. So I just, I just think that when determining the fees is another, determining the cost is going to be something that's done later.
Correct.
Okay, I just wonder, I only say that for myself, so I understand clearly what it is, and I'm going to, yeah, what I'm going to vote, no gains.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to open public comment. I didn't do that earlier. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item number 12? Yes, sir.
Ramon Yost, 16 through 8, South Browley. So we spent the last two and a half years working as a group off and on, and probably put in 100 hours overall. You know, we were appointed by council members from this council and previous one, by the mayor, by a city manager. We worked collectively to go ahead and put as much information in here as we could and worked with the consultants. So what you have in front of you is exactly what we worked for you all. We were appointed by you all, we worked for you all. Now, as for the impact fee, we're not quite there yet. We've still got some more time to look at that. Hopefully, here in the next two months, we'll get you guys some more information. But that's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ram.
Anyone else like to make comment?
Logan All, good news item of the day, I would say. So I personally joined the SEAC last year, and I've attended.
I hate to do this, well, I don't want to be the one, pardon my interrupting you, but Rebecca, if she already spoke, is this?
I'd like to also point out that on October 17th of 2023, Josh T. Hiniria spoke on two separate items, and this was allowed. And as a member of the SEAC, I would really appreciate it, just a couple of minutes.
Okay. I'm fine, but we're going to have a little meeting after this, because I don't know where all this is coming from. Anyway.
Certainly, and I'll talk fast. I know you're probably hungry and want to have your family. As I was saying, so I began the meetings last year, and I've attended over 16 meetings and workshops in the last nine months. Throughout those meetings, I've been continually impressed by development services staff and Pape Dawson consultants. I would say meticulous is an understatement. I definitely learned more about wastewater than I ever thought that I would want to, but I want to learn more now. So every time a question was asked of the staff or the consultants, they answered the question, even when it did not pertain to our role as members of the SEAC committee. These master plans are a culmination of years of money and time spent having been developed by professionals in their field. I can, I can be opposed to desalination and yet still be in support of these plans, as I have a clear understanding that these are plans and cost estimates or placeholders, as Al would say. They'll be subject to amendment as things in our region change and progress. So as you all know, mistakes were made by councils in regard to this matter as far back as 2006. Eighteen years later, here we are, and you all have an opportunity to rectify those mistakes and pass these master plans as recommended by the SEAC committee. I believe you all remember the tallied votes presented last week. Most of these plans passed unanimously despite overwhelming support by the SEAC. I feel that attempts are being made by folks to blatantly try to slow this process. We oftentimes hear the term decades of neglect, but what I believe we have is actually decades of poor decisions made by previous councils, like the ones who ignored consultant suggestions around master plans and impact fees multiple times. So I ask you to approve these master plans and take the first step in moving our city forward, and not to allow yourselves to be distracted by rhetoric that would slow this process even more. Your decisions on this matter will go down in history. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Moses Mastigasi, 80, 17, Browley Dock. I am the chairman of the SEAC committee, so I wanted to come here and also provide any questions or also provide some information. So just like Ram and Eli said, we've put a countless amount of time and hours into this. We've gone through the master plans with Peg Dawson and most of the city staff as well. With those master plans do come the capital improvement projects that you guys will be looking at as well, and that'll ultimately lead down to an analysis that we're doing as a group for the, sorry, impact fees. I can't forget that word. Impact fees that we're also looking at. So we're not there right now. We are supporting the master plans as a committee. We have supported them with the capital improvement projects as well, but we are still looking at all the information when it comes to impact fees, even though it is related to the capital improvement numbers that you guys have been looking at. So wanted to be here and go over that information and provide support for our committee and stand by for any questions, so.
Mayor, I do have a question for this. Were you afforded the opportunity to vote on these separately?
So the committee did look at the land use assumptions, made a vote on that, and we looked at each master plan, as you've got water, roadway, stormwater, and wastewater. But the vote did come where we approved them initially, the master plans initially, and then also voted to approve the CIP projects as well. But we did vote on them separately and then ultimately voted on them together.
Okay, so how much time did you spend on master plans versus the capital improvement projects?
Well, the committee has been over 23 meetings. Ultimately, the committee and more Peg Dawson as an engineer has put together the master plans, because our city had partial master plans. And during that same process, they brought through the capital improvement projects. We had one meeting for, per water, for road, stormwater, and wastewater, and then ultimately came back and revisited those capital improvement projects once adjustments had been made by Peg Dawson. So we approved the master plans first and then the costs associated with them. But we were asked to vote on both of them.
As one.
I just want to make one comment about this, why SEAC recommended it separately? Because I came to council, because once, once we got through land use assumptions and we started looking graphically at the master plans and we brought in the CIPs, Moses, along with the rest of the members of SEAC, says, this is way too much information, because we were trying to do two a day, two a meeting. And they said, no, we got to do these one at a time, the master plans and the CIPs, because it was just drinking from a fire hydrant. So you may notice, I came back to council and said, look, Pape Dawson needs, I don't know, 60 more meetings, because SEAC wants to kind of pump the brakes and kind of get a better understanding and not have to be drinking from a fire hydrant. So unlike this body, because, you know, we've had briefings and community meetings and workshops and public hearings, that group who has spent, you know, up to their elbows in it, just wanted to slow it down, to understand what was in front of them, and then make an informed recommendation for this body here. So that's the reason why several of them were separated, because it was just a lot of information to kind of comprehend in three and a half hours.
Okay, we're going to move forward. So anyone else like to make public comment? I'm going to close public comment. We have a motion and a second. The motion is to really basically pull out the master plans for a future date.
No, no, the capital improvement.
I'm sorry, the capital, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Capital improvements.
So it's to amend the ordinance, correct. So you want to do a roll call vote on the motion to amend? Okay, so for.
No.
No.
Okay, Barera, no. Campos, no. Hernandez?
He's gone.
He's gone. Klein?
No.
Pesley?
Gone.
He's gone. Roy?
No.
Suckley?
Yes.
Wajado?
No.
Okay, the motion fails.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the ordinance.
I second.
We have a second, okay? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no.
No.
The motion carries. Okay, item number 13, ordinance abandoning, vacating, and closing 8.0118 acres of improved and unimproved public right-of-way identified as Starry Road and Starry Circle between Yorktown Boulevard and Oso Creek.
I move for approval, and I add that it's about time.
Second.
Okay, do we, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, now I'm going to go ahead and open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any comment on item number 13, the caption I just read? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public comment. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Okay, all righty. That was our last item, so there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.